Thank you. Welcome to the October 9, 2024, meeting of the Oceanside City Council. I'd like to go ahead and call this meeting to order and begin with a roll call. Mr. Navarro?
Mayor Sanchez.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Keim. Councilmember Joyce.
Present.
Councilmember Robinson. Councilmember Weiss.
Thank you. Please rise for the invocation. Tonight, we have David Dobinsbeck from Salt and Light Ministry. He's the coordinator at Salt and Light Ministry from Calvary Chapel, Oceanside.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And it's good to be here with all of you, council members and department staff and others. And I'm not going to pray for the Padres, even though Councilman Rick over there is... I don't want to make anyone mad here, you know, with the potential Dodger fans. But anyway, seriously, I just want you to know, I do pray for each one of you council people on a regular basis by name, so it's a privilege to pray here with all of you. So let's bow in prayer together. Almighty God, we acknowledge and praise you as we begin another public assembly here in the city of Oceanside. You created our universe and this incredible planet Earth on which we dwell. In your wisdom, you instituted the three most fundamental and vital institutions of human society: the family, the church, and government. Thank you for the opportunity to gather as fellow residents and civic leaders and freely express our ideas and concerns for the betterment of our community. While we in this area of Southern California, oh God, are blessed with pleasant fall weather, other Americans living in the southeastern region of the United States presently are not so fortunate, those fellow citizens are experiencing the tragic loss of human lives, massive property destruction, and the elimination of basic utility services due to Hurricane Helene and now Hurricane Milton. Oh God, bring practical aid, clean water, food, medicine, and emotional comfort to the thousands who have been and are being adversely affected. Strengthen, protect, and make effective the massive efforts underway by first responders and relief workers there. Lord, we are grateful for the city council representatives and other municipal staff that deliberate before us today. Grant them clear heads, discernment, fairness, and successful solutions to pressing challenges like homelessness. May those this evening who make public comments be able to communicate clearly and respectfully. We also thank you for the diligent and brave services of our Oceanside police officers, firefighters, EMTs, and our military service men and women. Protect them as they protect us. Go before us now this evening, sovereign God, and I pray these things in Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. This evening, we have several students in the house from both OHS and El Camino High Schools, right? Yep. So we have Joseph Moron from El Camino High School. If you could step up, step forward, Joseph. There you are. And he is from El Camino High School, a voter project. In the mic.
I pledge allegiance to the...
Wait, wait, hold on.
Sorry.
What do you... Can you say the project?
The project that you talked to me about, the voter project, you're president of...
Oh, I'm the president of the Young Voters Club here at El Camino.
Okay, there you go.
Sorry.
Yay. All right.
First time doing this. Right hands over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Thank you. This is the proclamation and presentations portion of our meeting. And tonight, we are celebrating October Month, which is National Filipino-American History Month. And if members of FACO could please come on down and help me celebrate with this proclamation. Dory Harris, president of the Filipino-American Cultural Organization is here, as well as other members of FACO. Thank you. And I'll go ahead and begin reading. Whereas Filipino-Americans are the second-largest Asian-Pacific islander group in the United States and a significant and integral part of our diverse Oceanside community. And whereas the celebration of Filipino-American History Month in October commemorates the first recorded presence of Filipinos in the continental United States, which occurred on October 18, 1587, when Luzones Indios came ashore from the Spanish galleon Nuestra Señora de Esperanza and landed at what is now Morro Bay, California. In 2009, Congress recognized October as Filipino-American History Month in the United States, and it is now celebrated every year. The theme for 2024 is "Struggle, Resistance, Solidarity, and Resilience." And whereas the Filipino-American Cultural Organization, FACO, established in 1976, is an organization whose focus is youth, education, scholarships, disaster relief, and preservation and promotion of cultural heritage. And whereas FACO has a broad membership representing all regions of the Philippines and whose role in the community is especially important in Oceanside, where Filipino-Americans have made vital contributions in health, education, the military, technology, government, business, the entertainment industry, and the economy. And whereas FACO works to celebrate the diversity of our community and foster understanding and appreciation of Filipino culture by partnering with the Oceanside Public Library for the 23rd year, presenting the annual Oceanside Filipino Cultural Celebration, which occurred on Saturday, June 8, 2024, at the Oceanside Civic Center, the largest event ever, which was filled with music and dance performances, traditional dress and arts from the Philippines and from the Filipino-American community. And whereas this past Sunday, October 6, 2024, FACO partnered with St. Mary's Star of the Sea in presenting its third annual fall festival, adding Filipino-American cultural dance, music, and food to the wonderful event. And whereas on Saturday, December 21, FACO will be celebrating its 11th Annual HIAS Awards and Christmas Gala, honoring outstanding Filipino-American professionals in the fields of the humanities, industries, youth, arts, and sciences. Now therefore be resolved that I, Mayor Sanchez, on behalf of the city of Oceanside, do hereby proclaim the month of October as National Filipino-American History Month in the city of Oceanside and urge all residents and visitors to enjoy the culture, history, foods, music, and dances of one of the most important communities of our diverse city of Oceanside. Thank you. I'm going to hand this first. This is Dory Harris.
Hello, good evening. Thank you, Mayor. We really appreciate it. And we... The Filipino-American Cultural Organizations are very thankful to you for including us and always thinking about us and thanking the Filipino-American in the community. We really, really appreciate it. So on behalf of FACO, we are very grateful and thank you for your undying support and also always there for us in every single event that we always have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Dory. So if we can have a picture? Yes, thank you. Does anybody else want to do something? Thank you. Oh, wait. Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you. Next, we have the fire department has a proclamation in support of Fire Prevention Week, right? Yes, and I'm going to go ahead and hand the mic? Okay. It's actually a very important week, and I'm going to go ahead and hand this to our fire chief. Chief Parsons.
Good evening, everybody. The mayor has a proclamation, and it's a very long proclamation, so we're going to shorten it up a little bit, and I'm going to describe it to you. So this is Fire Prevention Week, and the theme of Fire Prevention Week is Smoke Detectors Save Lives. We know that smoke detectors save lives, and we know that because statistically... Do you know 96% of the homes in this country have smoke detectors? But 20% of those aren't working or don't have batteries in them. But more importantly, is three out of every people... Three out of every five people that die in a fire died in a home that did not have a working smoke detector. So we urge you in this Fire Prevention Week to look at your home, talk to your friends, talk to your family, and ask that question. You walk by that smoke detector every day, I bet, at your house. Are you even thinking about whether that's had its battery changed in the last few years? Preferably, it should be last six months, right? The great thing about smoke detectors now is that they last... They have batteries that last 10 years, and they're really easy to install and maintain. So you have a great fire department, you have a great police department that do wonderful work, but we don't want to have to respond when there's a death or an injury because of fire. We want you to be able to take care of yourself, your family members, your loved ones. And if you have trouble getting them, we have resources to help you get smoke detectors, whether it's through the fire department, the Red Cross. Please reach out to us, and we're happy to help you take care of that. In closing, for me, we have our fire department open house on Saturday from 9 to noon, where we will teach, interact. You can talk to me, the fire chief. I think there might even be a dunk tank. I'm hearing they might try to make me get dunked. So if you want to throw your... Get some anger out at me, you can do that. Chief Alavinos? Assistant Chief Alavinos, you can do that. I got... I think I got him on National Night Out, so... But we're going to have a lot of great event there. It's a really fun family event. Everybody really loves it. We're going to do some demonstrations. Please come out and talk to us. And next, Mayor, if it's okay, I'd like to introduce Ashley Lyons, our new emergency management coordinator, and she's going to touch on a few more items. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Ashley Lyons. I'm the new emergency management coordinator. I wanted to talk about a couple of things that we're doing in the emergency management department. We have been working on public education through presentation and workshops where we prepare the public for disaster preparedness so that we build a resilient community. Additionally, we have a CERT Academy coming up. CERT stands for the Community Emergency Response Team. So we're attempting to build our group of volunteers so that they can better serve the community in the event of a disaster. It's nice to meet all of you, and I'm happy to be part of the city.
Thank you. Well, if we can have a picture? Yes. So in between your department and my office, it's... The proclamation's there somewhere, so... But all the important stuff is there. Thank you so much. Thank you. Close session report?
Thank you. Council met at 3:30 to discuss labor negotiations involving the Western Council of Engineers and the Oceanside City Employees Association, as well as item two, workers' compensation case involving William Cogerman. There's no action under the Brown Act to report on that.
Thank you. Next are consent calendar items, items three through 21. Are there any requests to pull from the public?
There have been no requests to pull from the public.
Thank you. So there is a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second, but I'd like to pull number nine, please.
Which number which?
Number nine.
Nine. Okay. So the motion is for the balance. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. Item number nine is staff recommends the city council approve amendment number two to the professional services agreement. That's the PSA. With diet and Vatia and appropriate $275,950 from the committed general plan account for a total revised contract price of $3.6 million for consultant services in support of the second phase of the city's general plan update and authorize the city manager to execute the amendment. Did you have a specific question?
I'd just like to know, what is the current timeline to actually complete all the work right now, given the number of comments you received on the EIR?
Thank you, Councilmember Weiss. We intend to complete and release response to public comment by the end of this month, by the end of October. We intend to complete revisions of project deliverables by the end of November. We are looking to conduct a public workshop with this body on the 29th of January, 2025. We hope to have the draft environmental impact report revised and recirculated by March of next year, which would allow us to conduct an adoption hearing sometime in the summer of 2025.
Thank you. Move approval, staff recommendation.
Did you get the second?
Yes, I did.
Okay. There's a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and move up item number 22. Excuse me. Wrong one. Item number 28. Because we do have some young folks in the house, as I said. Could you all stand? This is Oceanside High School and El Camino High School, mostly seniors, right? Junior, some? Yep. RVV? All right. Well, thank you so much for coming on a school night. So I'm going to go ahead and call out what it is. You may be seated, and I believe some of you will be requesting to speak on this item. Request by Councilmember Joyce and Mayor Sanchez to direct staff to reestablish the Oceanside Youth Commission. The scope of work for the commission would include making suggestions to city council on youth-related issues and providing a youth perspective on the ongoing work of our city. This opportunity would allow youth from our city to feel empowered to engage and participate with local government, as well as provide city officials with the opportunity to hear and address our youth's concerns. Councilmember Joyce.
I will be very brief because it says this is a request from the mayor and myself, but this is a request from the students here in the building, and I think they're going to speak to it very well. We know that when people understand their local government and how to access the folks that are making decisions, they grow up and become more empowered as adults. So let's create the pathway that was here before, and I'll get out of the way. So you'll take...
All right, and that is your motion. I'll go ahead and second it. So we'll go ahead and start with comments from the public.
We have 11 speakers.
Okay.
As you see your name appear up on the screen, we have two available podiums. Please come on down to the next available podium. Our first speaker is Ania Ezell, to be followed by Zoe McKeller, to be followed by Taylan Hall.
Ania?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Anaya Ezell, and tonight I'll be speaking on the importance of creating a youth commission here in Oceanside, a decision that can have a profound and lasting impact on our city. We are facing challenges that directly affect our young people, from the rise in e-bike accidents to the need for safe and fun spaces where teens can connect and thrive. While adults can certainly address these issues, there is no substitute for the voices of those who experience these challenges firsthand, our youth. By establishing a youth commission, we're not just giving young people a seat at the table, we're empowering them to shape the future of Oceanside. When teens feel they have a say in decisions that affect their daily life, they are more likely to take ownership of the outcome. This creates a powerful domino effect, one that extends far beyond their immediate involvement. Imagine the impact of teens having a platform to share their concerns about e-bike safety. Who better to inform us about the risks they face on our roads than the very people who ride them daily? According to the National Transportation Safety Board, e-bike injuries have risen by more than 60% in the past five years. In California alone, there were over 1,000 e-bike incidents that resulted in severe injuries. In 2022, and teens under the age of 18 accounted for nearly 20% of these injuries. E-bike accidents are a growing issue in our community. Between January 2020 and July 2023, approximately 36% of the 188 bicycle incidents here in Oceanside involved e-bike riders. Furthermore, a recent study from the Journal of Safety Research found that e-bikes are involved in more serious crashes than traditional bikes, with a higher likelihood of head injuries and hospitalization. By empowering youth through this commission, we can work together to create safer streets and better education on responsible riding, which will undoubtedly reduce accidents and injuries. Then there's the matter of creating spaces where teens can gather safely and responsibly. We've seen the negative consequences when teens feel disconnected. Underage drinking, car accidents, and DUIs are real issues here in Oceanside. But when we provide them with dedicated, fun, and engaging spaces, we give them an alternative, a space where they can connect, build community, and grow in a positive environment where reduced risky behaviors, making our city safer for everyone. By involving youth in these decisions, we foster a sense of responsibility and pride, though not only help solve the issues they face today, but will also develop the skills to become leaders of tomorrow. This isn't just a plan for now, it's an investment in the long-term status, health, safety, and success of Oceanside. By creating a youth commission, we're laying down the foundation for a stronger, more inclusive city, and every voice will be heard. Thank you so much for your consideration and time.
Thank you. So?
Good evening, Mayor Sanchez and council members. Thank you for having me today. My name is Zoe McKeller-Mullen, and I am the Black Student Union president over at El Camino High School. I'm here in support of the re-establishment of a youth commission because as a teenager here in Oceanside, I have firsthand experience with many pressing issues affecting my peers that deeply concern me. One of the most pressing issues is substance use. As a teenager in Oceanside, I see a lot of teens taking the wrong path by having easy access to drugs and alcohol. I see this at school, the mall, class friendships, and even at the Thursday night Sunset Market here in downtown Oceanside. Kids everywhere are having easy access to drugs as well as alcohol, which is only becoming a larger problem. Teenagers are getting addicted before they even have the chance to get a high school diploma. Establishing a youth commission in Oceanside is essential to address the alarming issue of youth access to drugs and alcohol. Many young people in our community face significant pressures and temptations, often leading to experimentation and substance abuse. One in eight Californian students are using tobacco products, and 84% of them are using electronic ones. This is personal to a lot of us because many of these users are friends and our family. It's tough to see them fall harder to their addiction. But it's not just the kids, it's also the sellers. You see, sellers are now selling drugs to kids on several online platforms. They're hidden behind fake Snapchat names and private Instagram accounts who are openly following teenagers who fit the demographic for their buyers, and they make fun flavors that entice kids. This is an issue that is only getting worse and affecting more of the youth. With a youth commission, I believe that our generational connection will reach much farther than anything else. A dedicated youth commission would provide a platform for young voices to be heard, fostering collaboration between youth, parents, educators, and local authorities to develop targeted prevention strategies and support system. By prioritizing education and awareness, the commission can empower youth to make informed choices, ultimately creating a healthier, safer community for all. We want to have a voice that can help save our loved ones before we don't have the chance. Thank you.
Thank you, Zoe. Taylan?
Good evening, city council. My name is Taylan Hall, and I am the education chair of the NAACP, and I'm here to speak on the youth commission. We want the youth commission so we could provide a pathway for youth to take action in their community. For the longest time, many high schoolers and even middle schoolers, believe it or not, have had access to addictive drugs and other inhalants that get in the way of our ideal futures. Giving the youth a stage closer to the city hall will allow our community to spot out problems adults cannot get to the bottom of. All adults can do is advocate to the youth and teach them the dangers of drugs and addictive inhalants. We, the youth, know that these presentations don't work. Matter of fact, they create humor for the next few weeks, and the message is never brought through. So as a youth commission, we know, or we know more on what drugs are doing to our community, what they can do to us, since they have been to our friends and our loved ones, and we can better prepare measures to stop it. What we've done with our voices, we've started an earn our vote campaign with the help of member Eric Joyce, and we've been able to get candidates out to Oceanside High School and speak on their beliefs, speak on their plans to how they're going to run Oceanside for the next few years. We got the audience to understand more of their political views. We got to mention... We got to hear mentions of candidates who have hid their paths, who haven't publicized what they have done prior to their... Getting to their position. And we are able to see the true nature of candidates and how eager they are to gain a position. Our voices have even influenced other cities like Vista, where we advocated to start a city-specific scholarship, allowing high school and even college student residents be able to participate and earn money to pay for tuition. The scholarship already has two-thirds of the votes we need for it to be passed. With our ideas and drive to improve our community, Oceanside will become an even more ideal place for many residents in the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Joseph Murrow?
Good evening, council members. My name is Joseph Muddel. I was born and raised in Oceanside. I'm currently a senior attending El Camino High School, and I am 17 years old. Growing up in Oceanside and having lived here my entire life, I couldn't be more proud to say I'm from this great city. Seeing our city flourish as our downtown area has been revitalized, our close-knit communities, our diversity, history, and many other amazing qualities have made me proud to say I'm an Oceansider. However, there are certain aspects where I do believe we need to do better. We need more youth representation. Youth in Oceanside have no formal political power, and compared to our neighboring cities, we are lagging. Many of our neighboring cities have youth commissions in which their youth feel like they have a voice. We need a platform where Oceanside youth can feel empowered and engaged with local issues, ensure city policies reflect the needs and perspectives of young residents, and help develop leadership skills and civic knowledge within Oceanside youth. Many of my classmates at El Camino feel a sense of discontent with how little our voices are unheard. Many of them don't even know who our city officials are and what the city can do to help them with their... To help their families and communities with their needs. We are also just generally concerned that the city doesn't even care about us. While our downtown area might be revitalized, with it being safer, and many of my peers, including myself, going to the Sunset Market, many of us feel like downtown is becoming too expensive. Sadly, some of my peers have even stopped going downtown because of how expensive it has become. It's not just our downtown. Oceanside is becoming too expensive to live in. I've even questioned if I could even live in Oceanside when I'm older due to the rising cost of living. However, it is not just the cost of living we are concerned with. Another major concern is public safety, more specifically, the rising use of e-bikes. E-bikes have exploded in popularity, and even my own family members, including my brother, ride e-bikes to school. Compared to our neighboring cities like Carlsbad, we have taken a less aggressive approach. Many of my peers who live in Carlsbad have noticed an increased amount of e-bike safety resources and increased public awareness of how to ensure their safety. I'm deeply concerned for the safety of Oceanside youth who use e-bikes, but this isn't even the tip of the iceberg when it comes to issues that affect the youth. There are also many other issues like the ever-growing homeless population, increase in marijuana use among Oceanside youth, the lack of civic engagement with our youth, among many, many others. However, with a youth commission, we can provide enhanced policy relevancy, ensure city policies address the concerns of the youth, provide fresh ideas, promote intergenerational dialogue and understanding, and most importantly, strengthen the city's commitment to inclusivity and democratic participation. Being the founder and president of the ECHS Young Voters Club, I always tell my members to vote for those who can't. So today, I ask you to vote for those who can and give Oceanside youth a voice. Let the youth be able to influence the policies that will affect them later in life. Let the youth be able to address the needs of themselves, and most importantly, give the youth a chance to participate in our democratic government. I ask you, the council, to make the right decision and vote yes for the formation of the youth council in Oceanside. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Joseph. Attila Tota?
Hi, my name is Attila Tota. I'm the North County Program Manager for an organization called Boys to Men Mentoring. We're an in-school mentoring program. We mentor 800 boys in 40 schools all around San Diego. In Oceanside here, we've been working in Chavez... In Oceanside here, we've been working in Chavez, Chavez Middle School. And what we do is, we show up with these, in this case, boys. We do work in conjunction with girls organizations. But in particular, there is a boy crisis going on, and we know that between drug deaths, suicide rates amongst boys is three times what it is for girls. We realized that there's an issue. We're men in the community, who live in the community, who just show up for these youth to allow them to be heard and understood. I've been doing this for about fourteen years. The organization's been around for about twenty-seven years. But what I've found by creating a safe place in these schools for these boys to be heard and understood, University of San Diego came in and did a study and found out that boys who are in this program for a year, what they find out is the discipline issues drop by about eighty percent. And the grade point averages go up by about twenty-five percent. Because all we do is we create a safe place for them to be heard. What I find is that with a lot of the youth, there is so much pressure going on. They're living under a mental pressure cooker, in a sense. It comes from social media, from misinformation, just not understanding how to navigate their own world. And what I've found is that if we can just give them an opportunity to be heard, that pressure cooker kind of releases and allows them to go back and focus on how they can be better citizens, how they can create a better life for themselves, in their school, and in the community. So I'm really here as an advocate to, to hope that you re-establish this youth commission because there is nothing more valuable to me than youth being given an opportunity to be heard and understood. And when you do that, then they will join you in getting things done in a way that's productive for the community.
Thank you very much. Linay Branch? Linay?
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Sanchez and honorable city council members. My name is Linay Branch, and I stand before you today as a representative of the youth in Oceanside, presenting the case for reinstating our youth commission. Our community has always prided itself on inclusivity, growth, and ensuring that every resident, young and old, has a voice. However, there is a significant gap that remains unfilled: the voice of the youth. The youth in Oceanside make up a substantial portion of our population. In 2022, Oceanside had nearly forty thousand residents under the age of eighteen, which is around twenty percent of our city. Yet how often do we actively engage young people in the decision-making processes that shape the future they will inherit? How often are our opinions, ideas, and concerns directly reflected in the policies that impact our lives? Without a formal structure like the youth commission, the voices of young residents remain unheard, and their potential contributions are untapped. The reinstatement of the youth commission would provide a formal avenue for youth input, making it possible for young people to offer insights on issues like public safety, mental health, housing, environmental sustainability, and education matters that directly affect us. A youth-led body could advise on trends and challenges that may go unnoticed by adults. A youth commission could help provide to the council on effective safety campaigns and policies that resonate with younger residents, saving lives. But this isn't just about safety. The youth commission can be a powerful tool for fostering a deeper connection between the youth and our city government. By weighing their voices, you give young people an invaluable education and city engagement, creating the next generation of leaders. Oceanside is a forward-thinking city, known for its initiatives and sustainable practices, community programs, and of course, tourism. So let us be equally forward-thinking in how we prepare our youth to take part in these areas. They are not only our future, they are our present. What I ask of you, to those who are hesitant and undecided, to consider the broader impact, to look not just at the administrative logistics, but at what this presents or represents for Oceanside's long-term strength. A youth commission allows us to invest in our young people now, to ensure their concerns and solutions are weighed just as heavily as adults in our community. I urge you to look at this as an opportunity to cultivate a culture of inclusion, to create an Oceanside that listens to all residents, regardless of age. We've seen the potential of youth commission in nearby cities, San Marco, Vista, and Escondido. They have all implemented similar models with great success. If our neighboring cities can do it, why shouldn't Oceanside? Council members, I implore you to cast your vote in reinstating the youth commission. By doing so, you will not only give youth a sit at the table, but you also create a stronger, more unified Oceanside, one that acknowledges the importance of every voice. Thank you.
Thank you. Alicia Rankin?
Good evening, Mayor Sanchez and Oceanside council members. My name is Alicia Rankin, and I'm the president of the North San Diego County NAACP Youth Council. And I'm here today to talk about something that I believe is essential for the future of our city: the re-establishment of a youth commission in Oceanside. As young people, we are not just the future, we are the president. It's time for our voices to be heard in the decision-making processes that affect our lives. Oceanside is a diverse and vibrant city. And while we have many resources for our residents, there's a noticeable gap when it comes to engaging our youth in civic matters. A youth commission would serve as a bridge between the younger generation and our city leaders, ensuring that our concerns, our ideas, and our perspectives are taken seriously. First and foremost, a youth commission would provide representation. Right now, we have youth dealing with a range of issues, whether it's mental health, education, housing instability, gun violence, or climate change. But how many times are young people invited to the table when these issues are being discussed? We're the ones living these experiences, yet we are often left out of conversations that impact us directly. A youth commission would create a formal space for young people to contribute, ensuring that our voices are a part of the dialogue when policies and initiatives are being developed. Second, this commission would help create better policies. The youth of today are connected, informed, and passionate. We see what's happening around the world, and we believe innovative ideas and fresh perspectives to solve problems. Whether it's increasing access to youth programs, addressing homelessness, or working to improve public safety, we are ready to contribute. By tapping into the creativity and energy of young people, a youth commission could lead to more effective and inclusive solutions for our city. Additionally, having a youth commission would promote civic engagement. Right now, we have a generation that feels disillusioned with government and politics. Many of my peers believe that their voices don't matter and that change is impossible. By involving young people in local government through a youth commission, we can show them that they do have the power to make a difference. It will encourage more youth to participate in civic life, from voting in local elections to volunteering and becoming more active in our community. Finally, a youth commission is an investment in the future leadership of Oceanside. We all know that the future leaders of our city are currently sitting in our classrooms, playing on our sports fields, and participating in community events. By giving young people a seat at the table now, we are cultivating a generation of future leaders who are equipped with the knowledge, skills, and experience to take on larger roles in our community as they grow older. In conclusion, creating a youth commission is not just about having another committee. It's about valuing the voices of young people in Oceanside. It's about giving us a chance to contribute, to shape our community, and to become leaders who will continue to serve in the future. Let's make sure that Oceanside becomes a city that listens to its youth and invests in its future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, is it Mariah or Marsaya?
It's Mariah.
Mariah Glass, thank you.
Okay, thank you for the chance to speak today. My name is Mariah Glass, and I'm a student at Oceanside High School. I am here to advocate for the formation of a youth commission in Oceanside, a platform that would empower our young people to actively contribute to the policies and decisions that shape their lives. It's essential to give them a voice, especially as they face conflicts, challenges, and our community. One of the most urgent issues impacting the youth in Oceanside is drinking and drug, is substance use. The prevalence of vaping, underage drinking, and drug experimentation is on the rise, and it's affecting the health and future of our young residents. Many teenagers lack access to accurate information about the risks of substance use. And the current resources available for prevention and intervention are not always accessible or effective. A youth commission could be instrumental in addressing this problem by working closely with our city leader, schools, and local organizations to develop targeted prevention programs that resonate with young people. This group could also help create educational campaigns designed for youth by youth, by youth for youth, emphasizing the dangers of substance use and the way that their peers will understand and respect. A youth commission could empower young people to take an active role in tackling this issue, allowing them to shape solutions that directly affect their lives by involving them in the decision-making process we can create programs that are not only impactful but also unsustainable and truly reflective of the needs of Oceanside's youth. I urge the council to consider a positive impact a youth commission could have on our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, it's Marsaya Glass. Is that your sister? Yeah, okay. Great job.
Hello.
Glass family.
Hello, my name is Marsaya Glass. I'm a current student at Oceanside High School. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm here to advocate for the establishment of a youth commission in Oceanside. Our young people are a vital part of our community, and it's essential to create a platform where their voices are not only heard but also have a tangible impact on policy and decision-making. A youth commission would provide our young residents with a structured avenue to share their perspectives on issues affecting their lives and other solutions to improve our community. One pressing issue facing our youth in Oceanside is the growing concern around mental health and access to resources. The pressures of academic expectations, social media, and the rise in incidence of anxiety and depression have created a mental health crisis that we cannot ignore. Currently, many young people in Oceanside struggle to find the support they need, whether it be through school, counselors, or community service, which are often stretched too thin. A youth commission would work closely with the city officials to advocate for increased funding and resources for mental health work. They could also assist in developing youth-friendly outreach initiatives, raising awareness, and reducing the stigma around mental health. By forming a youth commission, we empower young people to take an active role in shaping their environment. They bring a fresh perspective and firsthand understanding of these issues, and they deserve a seat at the table. I strongly encourage the council to consider this opportunity to invest in the future of Oceanside by establishing a youth. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Wendy Bravo, Ms. Bravo?
My name's Wendy Bravo. I'm an artist. I've worked as an artist in residence in communities, working with youth to help empower their voices so that they can do exactly what it is that you're planning to do. And so I'm so pleased to see youth turn out here and want to take the reins. Years ago, when I had a grant from the state of California to work with youth on protection of saltwater marsh habitats, we approached the Imperial Beach Council with a performance piece that we did. The Aztec Water Goddess showed up and her cohorts, they brought in little ollas of the wildflowers that grow along the Sweetwater River with the intention of petitioning the council to hold back those lands for Federal Reserve so that they would not be subject to the developer's blade. It was lyrical. They enjoyed it. They had to adhere to the format and everything else, but it was creative, and they received a unanimous vote to hold off those lands. And the pleasure that they felt and the empowerment that they felt in doing that was palpable in the room. So onward, Oceanside. Glad to see you here.
Thank you very much. Mr. Knott? Jimmy Knott?
Mayor, council members, Jimmy Knott, one twenty-seven, Suri Lane. Not to be a voice of discouragement to the youth, but a reflection of reality. We seniors have been promised, in many ways, of getting our senior commission back. We have been waiting and waiting and waiting. We vote in the highest percentage numbers, and yet we wait.
Yeah.
However, I have to let you know, the city council is pigeonholing us, hiding us into small committees, somewhere within the park commission, I think, cutting our funding at our senior centers. Generally, I feel like they're waiting for us to die. So be prepared to be paid lip service and ignored. Why? We feel that it's political influence. So to eliminate that, why not, you know, limit the agenda item that can be considered at any of the youth or senior commissions to nail no endorsements and to only issues only, and bring them both back? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Knott. All right. So back to Councilmember Joyce. Okay, I have to say, didn't they do a good job, everybody? Yeah, they did a great job. It felt like it was in a college classroom.
I think they're ready to take some seats up here. So, yeah, I'm not going to repeat anything that needs to be said. I think what's said was what needed to be said. And it would be, I think it would be really a shame to turn around from this moment when we're so often, even with our commissions that we have right now, I hear from some folks that, oh, it's hard to get people to come to the commissions or to be there. I mean, we have a ready-made, you know, commission of young people that are ready to serve right now. And I, for one, for sure, will not be standing in the way. So the motion is to adopt the council member item number twenty-eight and re-establish the youth commission. If it passes, I would like to hear about timing from the city manager, but I'll get out of the way and hear from the rest of the colleagues.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Robinson.
They did do a very excellent job. And Ms. Branch had come in, I'd met with her earlier. I think most, I don't know if others of us have her, and to talk about this. And to be honest, I had some hesitation before the meeting. And when she left, I was so impressed with the way that she laid out her ideas and concepts. That being said, there was some off-agenda discussion just to complement, you know, what we had heard. And so I'm for the commission, but this says to reinstate the youth commission. I don't know if anybody on this dais was, okay, one. Good. But I don't know if that was effective. I don't know. My concern, well, my concern, I don't know how many years ago that was. My concern was, is how do we organize it? They bring up some very powerful words that they said. I took, they want to take action, they want to advocate, political power, safety. You know, there's a whole number of things. And I don't know if the format of the commission, how it would be established, how it would be, to just reinstate it. So my concern is, what's it going to look like? Let's take some time to make sure that we ferret out the best way to make the commission work. I'm just concerned with the way this is worded, just to say, re-establish from the old commission, because I know nothing about that. It's been gone for a while. So I say that. And I have to comment because I was, as I was listening and writing, just noting some things, you know, and the concerns that our young people have. And maybe some of the other folks in my age will agree or disagree with me. But I know you think you have, there are unique problems, and there are. But young people's problems have existed from, and we handled it in many of the same ways as your concerns. And if you think I'm kidding, look up the phrase, tune in, turn on, drop out. Check Dr. Timothy Leary. Those are... Those are the type of things that people my age dealt with as teenagers. The San Francisco scene, love-ins, flower power, a three-finger lid, if you don't know what that is. And I hope you don't, you know. We tried, Sakatumi? It did. But I'm just saying is that, don't think that because we're older and we sit up here that we don't have empathy and understand the issues. You know, they're just in a different format. They're just, so, yes, we want to hear you, I want to hear you, I want you to be engaged with your city, and I'll support it. I just hope that we don't rush into just throwing it together. Let's talk about, we don't have to do it tonight, but I think when city staff, we probably need to get our city manager's opinion of timing, how we can do this and really make it effective so it really, really works. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Robinson. I have to say, I think every generation has its challenges. And I think this is a very, very challenged generation in school with the different kind of drugs that are out there. E-bikes, not around when I was growing up. No, I had a, what is it called? Turnaround? Turnabout? But anyway, the way it was handled back then is the students decided which topic they were going to discuss that meeting. It was timing-wise, it was right after class, they had other things to go to, so I don't remember if the meeting was an hour and a half. That's kind of what I'm remembering. It was very specific timing. I think they were more disciplined than most of the other commissions that we have. And, I mean, I trust in them. It sounds like they have an agenda and different topics that they would be collaborating on to decide which ones will be the ones discussed. And maybe they'll be taking them one at a time, I don't know. But I think that there's enough guardrails that were back then. I mean, I, it was wonderful to hear our young folks back then, which was a few years ago for me, to really discussing these very, very critical issues in a way that brings so much understanding and in really giving back to the city and giving back to staff and helping us to address these issues. So I see their input very, very important to the city. So happy to hear that you're supporting this. What I'm going to say is, trust in the process, because I think this is, this seems to be a very, very positive process. I didn't hear any kind of differing kind of ideas. This was really just a very solid presentation by students from two different high schools. So, Councilmember Joyce?
I just ask, staff, if we, let's say we passed as-is, would we come back with bylaws? Like, what would be the next step in the process?
Well, there's, I guess, a couple of different ways that we can come about this. I would like to speak to my counterparts in the other jurisdictions that were mentioned. I have done some research on it because I do have met with many of the individuals that spoke tonight. And really, in the interest, similar to what Councilmember Robinson just said, in the interest of ensuring the success of the commission moving forward, I would like to do some research and look at best practices and make some recommendations to this body that, again, ensures the success of the commission moving forward. You know, in terms of timeframes, I was probably thinking in January is when I'd like to bring it back, only because December is such a month that's inflected between the holidays and the transition after the election and everything. Otherwise, it probably would have been in December, but realistically, it'll most likely be in January to bring back some recommendations to this body. And certainly, I think at that point, we can present some draft bylaws for consideration as well.
Right. And at the same time, we can open up the recruitment process, or not the recruitment, but the process for application, for applying for the commission at both of the high schools.
The only thing I was going to add is, as you're doing that process, could you actually also invite the youth in to talk about how that's going to look so that, again, it's a collaborative process of building the commission? Maybe it doesn't look just like Vista's, but...
Certainly, I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, Councilmember Weiss, and then Councilmember Robinson?
I have a question for the city attorney. If we establish the youth commission, would this be a Brown Act commission, subject to all the same restrictions that other commissions are?
All of our commissions are subject to the Brown Act. So if it's created by the city council and appointed by the mayor and council, yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Robinson?
I think, definitely have to have some education on that subject. You said both high schools. Are we just, is this going to be limited to just El Camino and Oceanside or other?
Vista, I guess. Oceanside residents.
Oceanside residents. Okay. Thanks.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, five zero.
Thank you and congratulations. We're going to move on, because we do want to try to get people out to watch the rest of the Padre game. So anyway, thank you very much. I'm going to go ahead and call the next item, item number 22. When you leave, if you could be, you know, quietly, because we are trying to get through the rest of the agenda. But thank you all so much for coming. You guys did a great job. Thank you. And that's item number 22, staff recommends city council award a contract to Gateway Pacific Contractors in the amount of $9.9 million for the construction of the fire, mountain, recycling, water reservoir, and pump station. Approve a professional services agreement with Hotch Consulting in the amount of $1.1 million for construction management and inspection services. Authorize city engineer to execute change orders up to a total of 10% of the contract value, and authorize city manager or designate to execute the agreements upon receipt of all supporting documents. And we have a presentation or report by Philip Tunnel, Senior Civil Engineer. Stone?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and council members. I am Philip Tunnel, Senior Civil Engineer in the Water Utilities Department. I will be the project manager for this project's construction. So as Mayor Sanchez read, staff's recommendation includes the four items on the screen. Two contracts, a construction contract with Gateway Pacific for around $10 million. Professional services agreement with Hope Consulting for the construction management and inspection for $1.1 million. Authorization for the city engineer to approve change orders up to 10% of the contract value, and authorization for the city manager to execute those agreements. Just by way of brief background, city council gave our department a goal of developing 50% local water supply by 2030. And one of the avenues we're pursuing to accomplish that is expanding our recycled water system. So this project will complete what we're calling the lower phase one portion of the recycled water system. We did advertise for bids for both the construction contract and the construction management contract. For the construction bids, our engineers estimate was right around $13 million. We received three bids, opened them on September 4th, and Gateway Pacific was the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. We also received three proposals for the construction management and inspection contract, and our panel, our review panel rated Hope Consulting both the highest and most suited to perform the service, and they were also the lowest cost, which was convenient to be both. Cost breakdown of our budget, I'll just note that this is anticipated to be an 18-month construction project, approximately. So our construction budget overall, over this fiscal year and next, is $13 million. We anticipate having about $2 million remaining after we complete it. And then for the construction management, we've got just under $2 million in the budget over the next two fiscal years, and we anticipate having around $800,000 remaining. And I'll just highlight that among our funding sources, we do have a $5 million state grant that the city was awarded that will help fund this project.
Sounds great.
So, in conclusion, again, staff's recommendation is the four items on the screen there, and I am available to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Any requests to speak from the public?
There are no requests to speak from the public on this item.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Yes, staff recommendation.
Okay, I'll go ahead and second that. Any other requests to speak? Seeing none, let's vote.
Item approved, five zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Onto the time-certain, six o'clock time-certain public hearing item, which is item number 25. And that is, staff recommends the city council adopt a resolution approving historic permit H23-00003 to designate the property located at 602 to 608 South Pacific Street as a locally significant historic resource. I'm going to go ahead and open up this public hearing and request disclosures from council members regarding constituent contacts and correspondence.
Staff only?
None.
Staff only?
None.
Staff?
All right, thank you. Mr. Navarro, are there any correspondence and or petitions?
We have received neither.
All right, thank you. So we do have a report from Ms. Shannon Vitale, our senior planner.
Thank you, Mayor Sanchez.
And she's very excited about this.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Sanchez. Good evening, council. I am Shannon Vitale, Senior Planner in the Development Services Department. I'm here this evening to discuss agenda item number 25, historic permit for the property located at 602 to 608 South Pacific Street. Staff is recommending the city council adopt a resolution approving historic permit H233 to designate the property at Pacific Street as a locally significant historic resource. The property, which is outlined in red on the slide, is located on the east side of Pacific Street, just south of Ash Street. The property has a land use designation of downtown, a zoning designation of downtown medium-density residential, and is within the townsite neighborhood planning area. The home located at 602 South Pacific Street is referred to as the Gertrude Bowers Cottage, and it was constructed around 1903 in the Dutch colonial style. The residence is listed in the city's 1992 Cultural Resources Survey as a property eligible for historic designation due to its notable architecture and significant Oceanside residence, including Gertrude Bowers and Guy Wisdom, who both resided on the property. As described in the cultural resources report that was prepared for the property, the property features many Dutch colonial architectural features, including a gambrel roof, wood shingles, overhanging eaves, and double-hung windows, all of which remain in fair condition. The home located at 608 South Pacific Street is referred to as the Curtis Cottage, and it was constructed sometime between 1901 and 1905. It features components of both prairie and craftsman architecture. The residence is also listed in the city's 1992 Cultural Resources Survey as a property eligible for historic designation due to its significant architecture styles and affiliation with a notable Oceanside resident, Lynn Curtis. As described in the report prepared for the property, it features many prairie and craftsman-style architectural features, including a prominent front porch, deep roof overhangs, wood siding, and columns at the front. The project before you tonight consists of a historic permit to designate this property as a local historic resource here in Oceanside. Staff reviewed the project for conformance with Chapter 14A, the Historic Preservation Ordinance, and determined that the project is eligible for historic designation because a property is associated with a historic person or persons, and the architecture of each house represents a significant design and style of construction. A historic designation will provide conservation and protection of the historically significant property. Any proposed alteration or demolition that would alter the historic resource would need to be, would need to come before you for approval. On August 20th, the project was brought before the Oceanside Historic Preservation Advisory Commission. The commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the historic permit. Therefore, staff is recommending the city council adopt a resolution approving historic permit H233 to designate the property located at 602 to 608 South Pacific Street as a locally significant historic resource. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions, and we also have a representative of the property owner here.
Okay, let's go ahead and hear from the property owner, representative. They do have the, yeah, time to speak.
Honorable Mayor Sanchez, I believe they're only here for questions.
Okay. Sounds good. Is that you, sir? There we go. Thank you very much. All right. So thank you very much. This is a time for public to speak on this item. You do not have to have signed up to speak on this item. Do we have anyone that's signed up? No?
No, we don't.
If you wish to address this item, please stand, approach the podium, state your name, and if you have, and then you can speak for up to three minutes. Seeing no one rising, I'm going to go ahead and close this portion of the public hearing and bring it back to the council. Is there a motion for, to adopt the resolution?
Move approval, staff recommendation.
All right. So there's a motion and a second. All right. No further requests to speak. Let's vote.
Motion approved, five zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. It's a wonderful, wonderful project.
It's so cool, learning about that history.
So I'm going to go to 24. We do have some other youth in the house on this item, so it is, it is a school night. So this is, this item 24 is, staff recommends city council approve three fiscal year 2024-25 professional service agreements and one contract amendment for the Oceanside Drug-Free Community Initiative Program, not to exceed a total of $573,282, and authorize the city manager to execute the agreements upon receipt of all supporting documents. And we have tonight, Michelle Gare, Management Analyst through the Housing Department. Ms. Gare? I understand we have one slide to present to the council.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Yes, I think that is true. One slide, probably the shortest presentation you've ever seen. Okay, so I am Michelle Gare for the record. I am the Management Analyst for Youth Services here at the city of Oceanside. That includes Measure X funding as well as the opioid settlement funding. And here's my single slide. So we, staff absolutely recommends that the city council approve the three professional service agreements and one contract amendment for the opioid funding, and recommends that you give the city manager permission to execute those agreements. Just briefly to talk about them, North County Lifeline has a substance abuse intervention program that takes a drug prevention, trauma-informed drug prevention program for middle and high school students. They have prevention groups. They're going to have youth substance abuse screening, intervention services, and substance use disorder case management, as well as relapse prevention planning in both English and Spanish. So that's the first one. Boys and Girls Club has a trauma-informed opioid and substance use prevention curriculum that was created by the Boys and Girls Club of America. It is evidence-based. They are going to do drug prevention programming three times a week, also in their evening and Saturday programs. They'll do parent education and engagement, referrals for substance use, and mental health screening. The North County LGBTQ Resource Center has a substance use disorder prevention and education after-school program that they're going to have for their youth. And they're going to incorporate physical and behavioral health, life skills, and recreation opportunities for participating youth. They're also going to outreach to 250 youth in Oceanside and provide onsite behavioral health case management. health case management. And finally, for our amendment, Vista Community Clinic has proposed expanding services, which will include all kinds of outreach and education across, across Oceanside, with youth-created media campaigns, both in spring and fall, parent workshops for effective drug prevention strategies, evidence-based programming in Step 1 for high school and middle, or for middle school youth, and facilitating youth advocacy groups, like Be The Resistance that they do at Oceanside High, the Stay Club for spreading tobacco and alcohol awareness, and the SUB Club, Substance Use Prevention. So, this is what we have brought to you, and we recommend that you approve these contracts.
Right, and the, and the VCC North Coastal, NCPC is for the one year.
Yes, that is for one year.
All right. Thank you very much. Are there any requests to speak from the public?
Yes, we have three speakers on this item.
Okay.
Our first speaker is Nanette Stam, to be followed by Cynthia Cardona, to be followed by Jimmy Naught.
Honorable Mayor and City Councilmember, my name is Nanette Stam. I'm here tonight on behalf of both of Vista Community Clinic, VCC, and North Coastal Prevention Coalition, NCPC. I serve as the Chief Community Health Officer for VCC and the Board Treasurer for NCPC. And I want to first all thank the City Council for recognizing the importance of youth prevention and early intervention efforts by allocating the city's opioid settlement funds to establish the Oceanside Drug-Free Communities Initiative, which is aimed at preventing drug addiction in vulnerable youth. The four programs before you tonight represent a multifaceted approach to support our Oceanside youth. The program presented by VCC in partnership with NCPC expands our longstanding 420 Remix Initiative, which aims to flip the narrative about marijuana use through a positive social norms campaign that promotes a message of health, wellness, and drug-free lifestyles for our youth. NCPC, in partnership with VCC, launched this youth-focused campaign in 2006, and over the nearly two decades since, we've evolved the 420 Remix Campaign to reflect the current environment today's youth experience. With the initial Oceanside DFC funding we received earlier this year, we were able to reach thousands of Oceanside youth, largely through showcasing the winning youth artwork of the 2024 420 Remix PSA contest on the North County Transit District bus ads and in Oceanside movie theaters. The proposed amendment will allow us to reach many more Oceanside youth with the Fall Campaign and add an early intervention and education component for our Oceanside middle schoolers and their parents. We've continued to get requests for help from our school partners to address the increase in substance use among our middle schoolers, particularly vaping. And with over 25 years of experience delivering health education and youth programming, we adapted an evidence-based program to create Step 1, which is delivered by a trained health educator. We successfully piloted this program last year at Roosevelt Middle School and are excited to expand it to more Oceanside youth and their parents. A key facet of our work evoke, involves, excuse me, collaboration with others, especially youth, including the Oceanside High School Be The Resistance Club, the Stay Club, and our middle school groups called Substance Use Prevention, or SUB Clubs, at Roosevelt and Kwahomi Park. We also partner with the Young Marines and our Reach Sites, and we have strong partnerships with both Oceanside and Vista Unified School District. And I welcome all of you to join us in this effort. We have our NCPC meeting tomorrow evening, 6 o'clock, at the Livwell Center on Oceanside Ranch, where we'll launch our 420 planning for, Remix Planning for 2025. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Cynthia Cardona, I do, I did hear that the, the video was not played at the, at the theaters. So, that was one thing that was a change.
Good afternoon, Mayor Sanchez and City Councilmembers. My name is, I am Maria Ramirez. I go to scholarship prep charter school. I go to Libby Lake Reach Program. I would like to share that tomorrow, the Reach youth will be at the meeting of the North Coast Prevention Coalition, and we would like to invite, we would like to invite you all to the meeting. It will be tomorrow from 6:00 PM through 7:00 PM at 3708 Oceanside Ranch Boulevard. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the invitation, Cynthia, and Mr. Naught. And can I, before, before you start speaking, Mr. Naught, how many, how many of you are here on this item, youth-wise? Would you like to stand up so we can see who's here for this item? Okay, there we go. Thank you very much.
Mayor, council members, Jimmy Naught, 127 Sherry Lane. And this time, I'm putting on my senior hat. Very simple, is that this is coming from the opioid settlement, and the opioids are basically the silent killer of thousands and thousands of seniors. And this is something that is really something that's hidden, because the lost seniors, they take pain meds as they grow older due to arthritis, other problems, and they save up their pain meds, and they commit suicide. Another thing that they do is, in saving up their pain meds, they don't take and put them in proper locations. I can give you one relation of a story in my own part, where a lady in her 90s would take the fentanyl patches, put them on her dining room table, hundreds of them, literally hundreds, put on the table. She would use one a week. She was given 20 a week. And what would take place is, they would just mount up, and she would stack them. Anybody could walk in. I was really worried about that. This is something that, this is targeted at youth. I think that we need to start looking at seniors also, and educating a lot of our seniors on how to properly handle their medications at home, securing them, even if it's just to give them a box that has a lid and a latch to put it into. Because what happens is, a lot of times, grandkids or great-grandkids comes over, and they see something like that as they get older. And we know what takes place from that point, and the great killer fentanyl is. And this is not the drugs illegal from a foreign country. This is our country. This is our mistakes, and it is correctable. So, this is something that we need to stop and start doing and thinking creatively. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Naught. This was through a request for proposals, perhaps at the next one, because I believe more money is coming. Is that correct, Mr. Mullen? That perhaps Parks and Rec Department could put in a, a proposal for, through the senior program, to address some of your concerns. The next one will probably be, I believe, sometime next, next year. Is that correct? Ms. Heinz, there will be another RP, a request for proposals for the additional funding at sometime next year?
Yes, we will have an additional RFP in January.
I believe that we're scheduled to get approximately, in the next, what, 10 years? Something like $3 million?
It's a conservative estimate, yes.
All right, thank you. So, there's still an opportunity for that. All right, to the council, council, is there a motion? Councilmember Robinson.
I have a question first, and then I'll move the item, but the city manager sent an email earlier today on this. Is that correct, Mr. Brago?
Yes, that is correct.
And I just, if I understood what you said, and that was that, because the numbers are a little different in the original staff report, that we'd allocate that second-year funding and hold it until staff, is that how I understood?
Yeah, well, we have a couple of different options. You could either allocate the full funding that was included in the staff report, and we would just hold back the remaining, I think it was $88,000 and change, or we can just have you guys approve the reduced budget amount, which we have that number for you, and then just essentially keep the money in the opioid account, and then just tap into it later. So, it really is up to you in terms of how much you decide to allocate at this point in time. But if I understand, and this point is important to get clarification on, as mentioned in my earlier correspondence, you know, staff's intent is to monitor the event and the success of the event in 2025. If, in fact, we do determine that it has been successful and worthy of the funds, we would want to come back to council for subsequent action to essentially get your approval to fund 2026 through a subsequent council action, as opposed to having them compete through an RFP process once again.
So, thank you. So, what I'd like to do is move this with the caveat that we fund the full two years with the direction that staff comes back at one year, reports on the effectiveness of the program, and then the money's already, we've already allocated the money. It's not somewhere where it trickles off, I don't know enough about the accounts, but, you know, I would just, that would be my motion.
Well, I, I actually would like to see that the first one first, because the partners dropped out, and we actually have been advised that the partners that the application was based on, dropped out. So, rather than completely not fund it, I prefer that we go ahead and fund it, because they're going to have to find other partnership, and then see how they do.
That's.
So, that would be my motion to fund it the first, for the first year, which was, what I understood, was staff's recommendation because of the issues that had surfaced, which I think would be a great thing to do.
Maybe I wasn't, maybe I wasn't clear, and I made the motion first, so.
Is there a second? Yeah. Yeah.
Who's, whose motion are they seconding?
Mine.
Why? I made mine first.
There was no second to yours.
We never asked.
That's why I spoke up, because that would be my motion to wait to see it evaluated. That is what was presented by staff during the presentation.
That's exactly what I was talking about, but we allocate the money now, so we don't...
There's plenty of money. There's, there's up to...
Never mind.
I think there's some legal issues that I'm concerned about, so I think this would be a really clean way of doing it, and I think, you know, I'm hoping that there are partnerships that they will be able to get to, they have time to do that, and to fulfill the requirements of the proposal.
No second.
Yeah, he did second.
I would just say I support the motion, because I don't think there's a risk that we're going to not have the funds either way. So, I think it's, instead of doing like a commitment to funds that, I don't know, that seems like almost just doing it anyway. So, I, I feel like we're not at risk of not having the funding during the next RFP process, so that's why I support the motion.
Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, if I could clarify, the revised budget amount is $484,450, just to get that on the record, and that's with the reduction that you've been discussing.
Right. And there will be another time, and, and you, you've actually suggested that they not have to compete, just be reviewed, so they wouldn't have to compete a second time around.
And we would bring that back to you in open session for your consideration, and we'll make sure the money is set aside in some form or fashion.
Great, thank you. There's a motion and second. Please vote.
Thank you for coming. Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you very much. Finally, item number 23. I know our, we've got a presentation ready. Staff and the Police and Fire Commission recommend that the City Council introduce an ordinance amending Sections 20.21.1 and 20.21.2 of the Oceanside City Code related to the city's regulation of public encampment and the storage of personal property in public places. And we have a report by Scott Garrett, Police Captain.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Deputy Mayor, councilmembers. I'm Scott Garrett. I'm a captain with the Oceanside Police Department, Community Services Division. Among several things, the Community Services Division encompasses our homeless outreach team, crime suppression team, and encampment details. Staff and the Police and Fire Commission recommend that the City Council introduce an ordinance amending Sections 20.21.1 and 20.21.2 of the Oceanside City Code related to public encampment and the storage of personal property in public places. So, a little background on this topic, on October 13th, 1993, the Oceanside City Council enacted an encampment ordinance that prohibited camping on public and private property. In 2018, the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals ruled in a case, Martin versus City of Boise, that enforcing encampment ordinances when no alternative shelter options were available violated the Eighth Amendment's cruel and unusual punishment clause. This ruling meant that cities could not enforce encampment ordinance, ordinances if shelter options were lacking. As a result, the Oceanside City Code was amended in 2021 to reflect the court's decision. Earlier this year, the U.S. Supreme Court heard a similar, similarly appealed case, the City of Grants Pass v. Johnson, and ruled that encampment ordinances enacted by both Boise and Grants Pass did not violate the Eighth Amendment. This ruling supersedes the Ninth Circuit's ruling. Furthermore, on July 25th, 2024, California Governor Gavin Newsom signed an executive order which mandated California state agencies to swiftly address the issue of homeless encampments. The order encouraged local agencies to adopt policies consistent with the order, with, quote, "both urgency and humanity." In response to the Supreme Court's decision and the governor's order, staff is proposing amending our encampment ordinances to reflect these decisions. Homelessness continues to be a serious social issue throughout the United States, particularly in California, which accounts for over a third of the nation's homeless population, and Oceanside is no exception. Based on the volume of complaints received, it is evident that the public has an expectation that their police department does something to address these quality-of-life issues surrounding homelessness. Since January 1st of this year, the Oceanside Police Department has fielded 1,021 calls for service directly related to encampments. This equates to nearly four calls for service per day, and each of these calls require a two-officer response. Additionally, our homeless outreach team sergeant fields an average of 10 to 20 complaints per week related to illegal encampments. These complaints originate from a variety of sources, including city staff, the council, or the general public. In response to these complaints, the Oceanside Police Department staffs encampment details approximately three to four times per week. These multi-officer details respond specifically to complaints of illegal encampments and work alongside service providers and cleanup crews to remove illegal encampments and trash left behind. Since January 1st of this year, officers and cleanup crews have removed 223 illegal encampments throughout the city. Over the last several years, the city has made substantial efforts to address the issues surrounding homelessness, utilizing a variety of strategies. Some of these programs include the following. The homeless outreach team. This unit consists of two teams with a police officer partnered with a social worker to provide strategic outreach services, direct engagement, and case management for the unsheltered individuals. The Oceanside Navigation Center. This year-round 50-bed shelter focuses on connecting individuals experiencing homelessness with permanent housing solution. The Bridge Housing Program. It's a program offering a 60-to-90-day transitional housing with priority given to holders of housing choice vouchers and veterans. The Encampment Resolution Funding Program. This program, in partnership with the City of Carlsbad and supported by an $11.4 million state grant, addresses homeless encampments along the State Route 78 corridor. This program offers comprehensive services such as intensive outreach and case management, street medicine, and substance abuse treatment. It specifically focuses on helping encampment residents who may be reluctant to receive these services. A Safe Parking Pilot Program, which hopefully is coming soon. This program is designed to support individuals living in their vehicles by providing a secure place to park overnight, along with case management and other supportive services. Staff is currently assessing potential locations to cite such use. Family Reunification Programs. This program supports individuals in reestablishing connections with family members, providing travel assistance, and offering other resources to help stabilize their living situations. And finally, Permanent Supportive Housing Developments. The city has invested in multiple developments that provide long-term housing solutions and onsite supportive... and onsite supportive services for individuals with significant barriers to housing stability. Most recently under this initiative was Greenbrier Village Integrated Supporting Housing, which is a 59-unit facility with onsite services for formerly homeless individuals, including veterans and young adults aging out of foster care system. However, staff asserts that addressing the complex issues surrounding homelessness requires a balanced, two-pronged approach. First off, strategies and programs designed to encourage pathways to permanent housing, such as the examples that were previously cited, but this must be balanced with the enforcement of laws and ordinances. Staff believes that by amending our current ordinance in compliance with the court's ruling and the governor's order, we can more effectively restore this balance. The main amendments proposed to the existing ordinance are as follows. The removal of subsection G, in which shelter bed availability would no longer be a prerequisite for enforcement, and modifying subsection D1, which would reduce property removal posting requirements from 48 to 24 hours. This section of the ordinance specifically applies to the storage of personal property in public places and is utilized when staff clears out larger and more established encampments. These proposed amendments would be an important tool to increase safety and address quality of life issues throughout the city. The governor's office encouraged agencies to act with urgency, to do more, to take proactive steps to address encampments. By reducing the time for notification of property removal at encampment sites from 48 to 24 hours, staff will have the ability to more efficiently and quickly respond to public complaints and proactively clean up encampments. It's important to note that this amendment, that should this amendment be adopted, the Oceanside Police Department would not change our deployment model with the homeless outreach team and the coordinated compassionate response in connecting individuals to the social services they need. Again, this will not affect how we model and deploy our homeless outreach. There oftentimes can be a misconception with the term enforcement. Similar to the governor's order, our officers are expected to address these issues with both urgency and humanity, treating everyone with dignity and respect. In general terms, enforcement under this section would include the following. A lawful detention, and this basically means that if an officer has reasonable suspicion that if a violation of a law or an ordinance has occurred, is occurring, or is about to occur, the individual is required to remain with the officer until he or she completes their investigation. In that case, if the officer deems it appropriate, he or she may issue the individual a citation. It should be noted that if this ordinance is amended, officers could utilize the option of issuing a citation as leverage to gain compliance from the individual. This would honestly be a likely tactic employed by our officers to resolve a call for service, which under the current ordinance is not a viable option. The individual would then be advised to clean up and vacate the encampment, and at the conclusion of the contact, the individual would be provided with a list of resources provided by our homeless outreach team. The bottom line is that enforcement of these sections of the Oceanside City Code does not mean the person is going to jail. At most, a citation would be issued, and the person would be free to leave once the contact is complete. Another potential benefit of enforcement is that it could be a conduit to plug service-resistant individuals into finally receiving the assistance they desperately need. In cooperation with the San Diego County Courts, homeless service agencies throughout the county, and the public defender's office, the homeless court program is an opportunity to encourage and incentivize individuals to receive services and case management in lieu of fines and/or penalty. If an individual volunteers to participate in this program, fines may be waived and warrants may be cleared if the person agrees to work with a service provider or case manager. This vital step allows trained professionals to provide individual care through case management and develop customized plans and strategies to move toward permanent housing. There are a variety of North County agencies authorized to refer clients to the homeless court program, and connections to these agencies can be made through our own homeless outreach Since the Supreme Court's decision, many local cities have amended or enacted encampment ordinances that comply with this ruling and/or the governor's order. And on this slide is a list of North County cities that have amended or enacted encampment ordinances and those that have not. The Police and Fire Commission recommended approval of this item at its regular meeting held on September 19th, 2024. The commission voted 5-3 in favor of recommending approval with one commissioner absent. The commissioners who voted against the recommendation voiced concern over changing the word "shall" to "should" in one of the subsections. Staff had initially presented this item and recommended changing the word to "should" with respect to an officer's obligation to offer a list of resources to individuals referenced in this section. After hearing their concerns, staff agreed to leave the word "shall" in the section, which is the version being presented to you this evening. This codifies the requirement to offer individuals a list of resources when being detained under this section. In conclusion, staff and Police and Fire Commission recommend that the city council introduce an ordinance amending sections 20.21.1 and 20.21.2 of the Oceanside City Code related to the city's regulation of public encampment and the storage of personal property in public places. Thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions relating to this.
Thank you. Yes, councilmember Joyce has some questions before we hear from the public.
And so these are some questions, but some of them may need to be answered by other staff, too, so just, I'll lay it out, and you can, you can look over that way if you need to. So my first question is, are we currently able to enforce laws that are broken by individuals who are homeless, other than the encampment ordinance as you described?
Yes.
Okay. Can you clarify what an encampment is defined as in our, in our city code?
Right. I mean, I could reference the code, but essentially it is more than mere sleeping. So if someone stops and sleeps, a simple bag or a bedroll is not. It's a, could be, include a tarp, cooking facilities, some type of makeshift shelter. It's more a totality of the circumstance and not mere sleeping in public.
I could give you the complete definition if you wanted. So camp means to pitch or occupy camp facilities or to use camp paraphernalia for living purposes in an outdoor area. The act of sleeping on its own does not constitute camping, and then we have separate definitions, if you want to hear those, for camp facilities and camp paraphernalia.
So sleeping on the sidewalk is, on a blanket is not prohibited?
It's not considered camping. There's a separate violation for blocking the sidewalk, but no, sitting in and of itself would not be.
Okay. How do you, how do folks right now who are on the street get to our shelter or get, I guess, placed in our, in our navigation center?
Okay. So the navigation is able, or the navigation center is able to refer people into the shelter, but primarily through our hot team. So our hot team has partnered up with a social worker, and what I've learned through speaking with this unit is it is a nuanced and complex process that can be time-consuming. And speaking with the social worker, one of their primary focuses is to deem if someone is clinically appropriate for shelter or congregate living, and our typical patrol officers are not equipped to do that screening. So there are two officers right now who are equipped to do that, both assigned to the homeless outreach.
Okay. And that is our resource if we're getting somebody off the street and out of homeless? That's where that we take, that's our only place to take them right now? Is that the hot team's only avenue out? And again, that might be for housing, I don't know if.
It's the housing department, too, though, right? I thought I read that the housing department can also refer people to the shelter.
Honorable mayor and council members, I can answer that question. The answer to that question is yes, they can. Our own, our own staff can do that as well. And in addition to the available, available shelter space at the navigation center, of course, we also have hotel vouchers that we can avail ourselves to. As a matter of fact, the $11.4 million grant that we received actually will fund a substantial number of hotel vouchers, so that's a resource that we expect to be using as well in the future.
From my understanding, that grant is just for individuals that are coming out of that specific area. That wouldn't be something to get used for.
It is targeted, it is targeted along the 78 corridor, which quite frankly is where a large number of our unhoused population resides.
So since you brought up the grant funding, we do have $11 million in grant funding. Is there enforcement included in that program?
My understanding is no. It's not an enforcement-based program.
And so is there a prohibition on using enforcement in the area that we're utilizing these funds for?
I don't necessarily think that's the case. I would probably ask our housing manager to, or Layla, if she's in the audience. Okay. So apparently the answer is no.
My understanding is the funds cannot be used for law enforcement purposes. I think you asked, can they be used in the areas? I'm not sure the area is covered by that grant.
Well, I guess the question is, if we are receiving money to operate services in a designated area that is supposed to not be using enforcement, is supposed to be using this comprehensive model of care, and then we start enforcing camp, encampment bans through police action, is that jeopardizing the funding that we're receiving because we're now doing actions that are counter to that?
My understanding is the answer is no. We could enforce our laws, but we can't use the funding that we receive for, to fund that activity.
That's correct. And then, well, I'll save, I'll save the rest. Those are my questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So do we have any requests from the public to speak on this matter?
We have 19 speakers signed up.
19. Okay. So I am going to be asking you to, I know this is a very critical issue, but I am going to be asking you to cut it down to two minutes each. All right. So you want to go ahead and get started on the list. If you need a little bit more time, because I didn't give you very much heads up on this, I'll certainly work with you on that. The first few, the first four are Alyssa Pfeifer, Jean Josefo, Ron Dwyer-Voss, and Brian Peterson. So the first two, if you can approach the podium. We do have two podiums, so Alyssa Pfeifer, if you could speak first, and then Jean Josefo. Are you Alyssa?
No.
Okay. Is Alyssa here? Okay, then we'll go back. Jean Josefo, followed by Ron Dwyer-Voss.
Good evening, and thank you for your time. I am Jean. I was born and raised.
Could you put the mic down to your level?
Can you speak into the microphone there?
I sound so loud to myself. Is that better? Can you hear me now?
Yeah, it's all your time, too.
High school or something together?
Yeah, I was born and raised here, and I graduated in 73.
Okay, 74.
Okay, yeah.
Oh, I just wear the vest. No. You look so familiar. I mean, that face, it's like, you, you look the same. Sorry about that. Okay, go ahead. Start your time up again. My apologies.
I think it's, I think it's been great. So anyway, I was born and raised here in Oceanside, and I still work in, and I own property in the Oceanside Industrial Park, which my family helped to develop in the 1960s. And I'm here tonight in support of giving the Oceanside Police Department the ability to dismantle encampments with 24-hour notice. The OPD is tasked with an impossible array of duties. They're asked to prevent crime, respond to emergencies, domestic disputes, and now to provide mental health services to people, and they are asking for a bigger toolbox to be effective. I urge you all to take into consideration the health and safety of the people who work and live in Oceanside and remove the requirement for the officers to offer shelter prior to dismantling encampments, which can be both unsanitary and unsafe. The police do their best to help, but this is an issue bigger than the police can or should handle and requires the courageous and decisive action on the part of our elected officials at all levels, and you can make a difference tonight, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Ron Dwyer-Voss, followed by Kristin M. Mr. Voss?
I serve on the Oceanside Housing Commission and as a member of Oceanside Sanctuary Justice Works Team. I'm a resident of downtown Oceanside. My views are, the views I'm expressing tonight are my own because the Housing Commission wasn't built it. This went around us, as things do, and I believe the true, the same is true for the Community Relations Commission, so I have processed questions. My quick points are, police sweeps aren't solutions. They tend to scatter problems rather than solve them. Police sweeps will create more problems for both the unhoused and the neighborhoods that they find to live and sleep in. They bring chaos, not compassion. The fastest-growing groups of people who are becoming unhoused are veterans and seniors. This is a punitive approach to those who've served our country and those who are most physically vulnerable. Maybe it should be called the Oceanside Senior and Veteran Removal Act, and then you can put your names in front of it if you vote for it. I don't think we want to substitute Ocean Police, Oceanside Police Department for a homeless coordinator. You funded one, you haven't hired one. OPD shouldn't be asked to carry that burden. Sweeps without compassion and housing solutions will hurt the moral conscience of our citizens and go against the faith of many who believe we are called to be compassionate to those who are the poorest among us. Solutions to these challenges are multi-pronged, coordinated approach involving social services, mental health, housing, and shelter, as the captain indicated, but asking them to solve the issues through enforcement is simply going to scatter the issue and not solve the issue. I encourage you to, as councilmember Robinson said earlier, not rush into this, put the key stakeholders together, and come up with a comprehensive plan to deal with encampments rather than a police plan.
Thank you very much. Brian Peterson, followed by Kristin M.
Good evening, esteemed mayor and council members. My name is Brian Peterson. I'm here tonight on behalf of St. Brigid's Episcopal Church. We're a local faith community here in Oceanside, and a big part of our mission is working with, forming relationships with, and helping out these unhoused neighbors of ours, and we want to speak against this proposed change. We believe that it'll be harmful, not just to the people that are being directly affected by it, the unhoused community, but also to the wider community, because it puts people who are most vulnerable into an even more precarious position that they then have to find themselves digging their way out of. We can empathize with the police that are proposing this. We understand that they get put in the position of dealing with some of the roughest situations with regard to folks that are living outdoors, but this proposal doesn't fix that. This proposal doesn't, doesn't create a balance. It simply shifts the balance far to the side of making this a law enforcement issue. We all know that homelessness is a multifaceted issue. It's a housing affordability issue, it's a mental health issue, it's a substance abuse issue, and we believe that a better solution to this would be to involve stakeholders that have a voice in, in each of those areas, instead of turning this into primarily a law enforcement issue. I've been doing this type of work for over 20 years. I've seen this kind of thing done in other cities. It, it never works. It's not a long-term solution. And so I'll close by saying, in our faith tradition, we have a belief that, as you have done to the least of these, you have done unto me, and we also believe that applies to communities. The measure of a community is how it treats its most vulnerable citizens, and we believe that we can do better than this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Kristin, or Christine M.
Hi, my name is Kristin Maldonado, and I attend Oceanside Sanctuary, and I'll try to make this super quick. I know we're short on time. Governor Newsom's executive order does direct departments to adopt humane and dignified policies, and per his order, state agencies were told to model their encampment policies around one that Caltrans has used, and that includes warning residents at least 48 hours before clearing a camp. He has, Governor Newsom also encouraged local agencies to adopt similar policies, and I don't believe that the proposed policy actually aligns with what Newsom has qualified as humane and dignified. Additionally, in looking at the proposed revisions to the ordinance, it gets rid of that enforcement in section, section entirely, which includes notifying, it includes reference to the hot team. It takes out that requirement, which I think is super critical when you're working with this population. It's, it requires a multifaceted approach, and it's not something that can be handled just by enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Nations, followed by Janelle Coker.
All right. Thank you so much. My name is Jennifer Nations. I'm also a resident here in Oceanside. My kids go to school here, and. And I am also speaking against this. I agree with what the other speakers have said, that I think this just requires more input, more conversation, more thoughtful process. I can appreciate the situation that I think our elected officials and our law enforcement are in. But as was noted, this won't do anything to reduce homelessness in our community. So I've been thinking through, what are the potential consequences, even potentially unintended consequences, of a policy like this? And I think one is, we would likely see increased transients. So people forced to move more often. And that has a direct impact on people being able to connect with service providers, maintain access to healthcare. It's also possible that it would increase people moving into hidden, out-of-the-way places, which again leads to additional disconnection when what we really need to do is connect, of course. It would increase fines. So kind of putting people in a perpetual state of debt and arrears. It's unlikely to change anything about even visible homelessness because rather than it suddenly disappearing, it will just move into different areas of the city because it, of course, doesn't give people an off-ramp out of homelessness. It just forces them to move more often. I also, based on research that's been done in other places, it's not a wise use of taxpayer money. So we need to search for other solutions. We have ideas on what those are. Those are hard, those are long processes, and I recognize that. But this won't get us anywhere that we want to go. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Janelle Coker, followed by Jason Coker.
Hi, my name is Janelle Coker. I'm a pastor at the Oceanside Sanctuary. And I cut my notes short because so many of my people have had great things to say. I'm going to say this. We are a church that is located on the corner of Freeman and Topeka. And I have personally witnessed what happens when law enforcement or the gatekeeper security guards move unhoused individuals off of Coast Highway. These sweeps of unhoused individuals move right into the neighborhoods. And I hear about that from those neighbors. I can tell you from my neighbors that there have been more calls because of those sweeps of individuals moving off of Coast Highway in a public area. There's nowhere else for folks to go. So then they start sleeping on public property. There are no bathrooms for them to use. Or on private property. So then they start using bathrooms on private property. Making poverty a crime is immoral and unhelpful. This will change what camping is so that anyone who's just trying to get out of the rain with a blanket can get a ticket. We need solutions, more than just a 50-bed, for our hundreds of homeless people that are being created every year. We cannot leave this to the police. We need to come together. We need to talk to the Housing Commission. We need to really look at this encampment grant and make sure that we're not sweeping an area where people are working to do good work to deal with homelessness. Please, take a minute before we approve this. Let's get all of the players involved. I have 400 members at a church that are waiting excitedly to hear who's going to vote yes and who's going to vote no to wait.
Thank you very much. Jason Coker, followed by Paul McNamara.
Good evening, esteemed city council members. My name is Jason Coker, and I'm the co-lead minister at the Oceanside Sanctuary. I'm also here to speak out against 24 to 70 concerning homeless encampments. As a pastor, I'm not here to comment on the politics, but rather to speak to the moral and ethical obligations of this city council, this most vulnerable citizen. As this council knows, people are unhoused for a variety of complicated and often overlapping reasons. These include economic crisis, family instability, developmental challenges, physical and mental illnesses, discrimination, addiction, and abuse. Our neighbors who suffer from these circumstances and afflictions are not criminals in need of punishment, but patients in need of care, compassion, and comprehensive resources for getting back on their feet. While homeless encampments are not safe or humane as a housing solution for anyone, the widespread national crisis of homelessness cannot be solved by policing. Homelessness is not a crime. It's a social problem in need of compassionate, dignified, long-term solutions coordinated at the regional level in cooperation with every sector of our community. By giving the green light to OPD to simply destroy dwellings and the property of unhoused neighbors on short notice and without the support of direct social service resources and devoid of any comprehensive regional plan, Oceanside will simply be kicking the can down the road yet again. I urge you to send this recommendation back to city staff for a plan that is more humane, that reduces harm to unhoused neighbors, and that prioritizes their health and well-being. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McNamara.
Good evening, honorable mayor and council members. I'm speaking to you today as the executive director of the Brother Benno Foundation and also as the former mayor of Escondido that's dealt with a lot of the similar problems that you're dealing with this evening. I think you heard from everyone that homelessness is a complex problem. Brother Benno's has been here for 40 years thanks to the generosity and donations and support of the Oceanside community. As someone who lived in Escondido, I think you should be very proud of this community. That said, there are, things can be done. The one thing that I have learned at Brother Benno's is that you can't, we're not going to solve the problem, but we can do things that mitigate it. And that we will need to do, as many of the previous speakers have said, consider all the other options. And so while this may pass tonight, I would encourage you to make sure that those other elements are also considered, at least in the near-future date. And that's things like housing, the addressable of mental health, and things of that nature. Finally, I'd like to just do a quick shout-out with the city staff. We meet with them monthly. They've been incredibly helpful in improving the quality of life for our guests and taking care of things. I also want to say something in support. We often, well, not often. It used to be often, but not often now, would have to call the police. And in all of our encounters with the police, I think they've treated our guests, the homeless and the working poor, with a lot of dignity and respect. So I have every confidence that they would continue to do that with, if this ordinance passes this evening. With that, thank you very much.
Thank you, mayor. Larry Warner, correct?
Yes.
Followed by Wendy Bravo. Thank you.
My name is Larry Warner. Thank you for your time this evening. I'm part of Oceanside Sanctuary, Live Free Oceanside, which is comprised of a number of churches in Oceanside, and SDOP, which is a county-wide faith-based organization. I was troubled by the current OPD proposal for it seems to be a move away from our current compassionate stance that speaks to the worth and dignity of the unhoused, the more aggressive and punitive position. I believe conducting sweeps without compassion and housing solutions will hurt the soul of our city and the OPD officers whose task it is to remove these individuals. We are, we as a city need to be guided by compassion, seeking solutions resulting from coordinated approaches involving social services, mental health, the Housing Commission, and selected nonprofits. The weight of our issues around the unhoused should not solely be thrust upon the OPD. I urge you to vote no and commit to a compassionate and coordinated path forward in addressing our unhoused individuals in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bravo, followed by Jimmy Naught.
We can come in on this. This is today, and this is my concern. My name's Wendy Bravo. I'm an oblate at the Prince of Peace Abbey and a strong advocate for the poor and have run a food bank here in town and also go visit. And I've been through the encampments over the course of years. And also I'm a good Sam, and I talk frequently to the police when I have to call in somebody's face down in their own urine. Or I couldn't call the police one time. Down in the industrial section, a woman was distraught because her cart had broken. And so she had a psychotic episode. She was addressing legions in the street and then sat down and took out a pair of flyers and started pulling her flesh off. We have people back there who are out of sight right now, who are hiding because they can't be seen. They don't want to be seen. They're afraid for one reason or another. These are casualties here when you break up encampments and they can't watch each other's backs. The police know this well. And I've spoken often to the police here. You see that two men were found beaten to death. You have to go to a little bit of trouble to beat somebody to death. You know, it's not that easily accomplished. And these were in very close proximity and time. One stabbed near to death. Now, this is the reality of breaking up encampments without a backup, without any place for them to go. I wrote a letter. I sent it to my friends, and my printer promptly broke down. But I'll try to just say a couple of things out of it. That Oceanside's Foreign Shelter needs your help. The police can't do this job. And if you talk to them when they come out on a call, I've done many good Sam calls. They're very, very polite. But they don't have the resources available to get these people undercover. And I know from the bottom of my heart, as much as I know about the police and support them, that the pain they feel in their heart is that they cannot say, here's where you can go right now.
Can you?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Naught, followed by Sheila Duncan.
That's the location where the murders and injury took place. That's the result of having anti-homelessness in your heart. What is the exact duties of OPD? Where did it come from? What are the feelings of the homelessness when you remove the property? I asked one of the homeless what they felt. The homeless person said to me, they're removing my existence. Would you like someone to pull your existence out from whatever you have in life? You never existed in this world. That's what you're doing. Where did that come from? Let's go back in history. Let's go back to 1960s when Ronald Reagan closed the state mental institutions. And that was supposed to be taken over by the communities and the counties. And it was supposed to be supported by our local taxes. And our counties supposedly took it over. Health services, social services, district attorney. But now we have our police department doing the job when those other departments should be doing the job. They're doing too much. It's showing the stress on the department by the amount of money we're spending on the department on duties the other departments in the counties should be doing. So this is where we're taking and putting our money, and it should be coming from a different place. Thank you.
Thank you. Sheila Duncan, followed by Simon Guzman. Simon, Guzman.
Good evening, members of Oceanside City Council. My name is Sheila Duncan, and I'm thinking I should have had one of those students speaking for me that were here earlier. They were so good. My family has owned and operated Copperwood Barber Shop here in Oceanside for the past 36 years. We have truly enjoyed being part of the community for a neighborhood barber shop. Our business is located in a strip mall with 10 other businesses. Some of the other people that didn't get here in time to sign up, the young woman that owns a flower shop and where the women's resource is there. There's also a female-owned donut shop there, and they have been there longer than we have. I'm here today to bring attention to this serious issue that's been directly affecting us, not only our business, but our safety and well-being of our community. The homeless population has become increasingly active right outside our businesses, right in front of our doors. I have personally cleaned up feces in the morning before the customers start coming in, urine. There's people having sex in the back of the barber shop when we're trying to bring in our supplies for the day. They're by the trash. Some of them are very violent and screaming. They'll come running at you when you're just trying to get into the door. It's very nerve-wracking. I mean, I was in my 20s when my family's first started this barber shop. And I'm not that young anymore. And it's really, it is really nerve-wracking for a lot of us that we came as a community tonight. It's very scary, very scary. And the customers, they've addressed us that they're afraid to come in. I want to end on, I know a lot of these individuals are struggling with mental health and drug issues, which makes them unpredictably aggressive. I'm here to ask you to provide the Oceanside Police Department with the necessary funding and resources to protect our citizens and merchants of Oceanside. We need your support to address the crisis immediately so that we can all feel safe in our community again. Thank you for your time and attention.
Mr. Guzman.
Good evening, esteemed city council members, city mayor, Padres fans. My name is Simon Guzman. I use pronouns such as he, him, and el. I'm here as a local resident, a worker here in our city, and also someone whose family experienced homelessness here in our city. And I think we're pretty decent humans. I'm here to express my concern for this newly proposed policy, which, if implemented as-is, would permit any Oceanside police officer to sweep people who are experiencing homelessness out of sight. And while I understand that our council will feel the need to act, right, and address homelessness population growth in recent years, I am more concerned about a reactionary policy that can cause further harm and escalate this issue in a manner that would impact unhoused and neighborhood communities alike, that would impact city workers tasked with outreach to these populations, such as our police officers and service providers who are actively working with our city to serve unhoused individuals and provide alternatives. But our city really needs thought-out policies and infrastructure where all stakeholders are included and can work together on how we encounter outreach, serve, and provide long-term solution for our unhoused neighbors and where we can think about public safety in a way that matches our values and where we meet the need for a comprehensive infrastructure that really tackles this issue full-on. We heard what happened today, and I think it's just a reminder that our unhoused community members are not perpetrators of violence, members are not perpetrators of violence, but oftentimes are the ones who experience violence. And in this moment, we need to remember that we need to create cultures of care. And I think all of us want to uplift that. So I urge the city council to take this initiative back to the Housing Commission so that they can weigh in on the impact this can have, where we gather more data to justify or provide an alternative to increase in law enforcement capacity and further more conversations. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Amber Kay Niatoa followed by Richard Newton.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the council. I'm here tonight, like many citizens in the room, concerned about the proposed amendment to city ordinances regarding encampment enforcement. These proposals are merely Band-Aid solutions by simply sweeping our houseless community from one neighborhood to another. I mean, even the business owner who was just up here is speaking because we have been moving people further and further east. And so we're creating, the population isn't changing. We're just shuffling them into more concentrated areas and then making it a larger problem in different neighborhoods. But we're going to put more strain on resources on our officers because now they're going to have to break down here and then break down there and then break down there. This is going to be a game of whack-a-mole. So it is imperative that we take a little more comprehensive and compassionate approach when addressing this issue. We see that it doesn't work by the business owners who are standing here today impacted by the policies that we've already put in place, spending over a million of our Measure X tax dollars for a security firm to simply whack-a-mole our unhoused neighbors into different areas of our community. And those areas of the community don't have those paid security forces to whack them out of their neighborhoods. So now we're putting that on the shoulders of our police officers who are already doing other work. So we should not be increasing this work just because we don't want to take the time to make more comprehensive and compassionate solutions. We received a grant that says we require that. While we may have learned tonight that it doesn't mean we can't have this policy, I'm sure it doesn't align with the practices of compassionate movement that this grant is asking us as a community to perform under. Because these sections that we're talking about too are also in relation to housing, I think we could be at risk for jeopardizing that grant while we say it's not necessarily true. Is that fully been vetted? And do we know that to fully not be true? Can, I mean, we heard, I think so, but is that positive? So I'd like to know about that. And let's just vote no and push it off to a later date. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Richard Newton followed by David O.
I encourage you to pass this. There's an adage that you must respect yourself before others will respect you. I've seen homeless squatting on the sidewalks for a bowel movement or openly and brazenly urinating in front of public traffic. I do not respect them. They are not vulnerable. They are contemptible. Many choose to live this way. If you ask them, they will say they want housing, but when you impose rules of behavior, they would rather live free without housing. So while they don't want to be burdened with responsibility, they would set up their home tents on public property that sidewalk, the sidewalks, it is not theirs. They do not pay taxes, and they burden the system. That sidewalk is mine. I pay taxes. I don't want to be, I don't burden the system. I take care of myself. I don't want to have to walk around their tents or their debris. I don't want to even look at them. They damage our city with their ugly blight. Compassionate coexistence with the homeless has not worked. It has enabled them and exacerbated this problem in society. Tough love is needed. We have seen, we have never seen so much homelessness as we do now with these soft-handed policies. Please do whatever is required to get rid of these homeless. They are a blight on our city, and they burden every responsible citizen. They are not quote-unquote unhoused residents, as I have heard them referred to. They are hobos. That is an abbreviation for homeless bum. Please clean up our city. They are not residents at all. They are drifters who decided to camp out here. Everyone must pull their own load. That is the mark of a good citizen, one who does not burden others with their housing or other living expenses. Institutionalize those who cannot provide for themselves. It is far more humane to let the homeless, to institutionalize them and let them live like animals on the street. Use tough love to incentivize those who can work but choose to live like Eaton said. Thank you.
Thank you. David O followed by Bram Frazier.
So there's that. That is who is wanting this ban to go through. There are, with Governor Newsom's order that was put forward, yes, you mentioned urgency and bringing that in the presentation, but there was also humanity and that was in there. And bringing that forward, I think, is something that is super, super necessary in order to create some sort of solution for any sort of multi-pronged approach. Or, yeah, multi-pronged approach to address homelessness. I am getting my master's in social work. I am an MSW student at SDSU State. I grew up in Oceanside here. I want to bring some services, some sort of kind of like social work life here. And this is not the way to kind of start that. There needs to be coordination that has to happen between the resources. There needs to be actual, yes, it is the hot team, the Oceanside hot team that we have is enforcement, is not enforcement-focused, but it is enforcement-led. It is police officers that go in, talk to these people, talk to our unhoused neighbors. We, they are the ones that are providing the services. They are the ones that are coming in. It is the social worker that is secondary. And that is not the way that we should be doing that. If that is something that we are pushing forward, then we are just going to be kind of exacerbating the issue by pushing for this, by pushing this ban forward. We are making our most vulnerable individuals get pushed into spaces where they are going to be isolated from the resources, but also from visibility and from our protection. And so we are going to get instances and more instances of people that are being violently attacked. And so that is something that we need to kind of be looking at when we are creating these policies, rather than just putting a blanket statement of we should get rid of them. So, thank you.
Thank you. Last person then is Bram Frazier. And that first person never appeared? Okay, thank you. Mr. Frazier.
Mr. Sanchez, members of the council, I'm Bram Frazier, 40-year resident of this great city. I have been a businessman here, a civil engineer, and I have an office building on El Camino Real, just up in the 78th corridor. It's on the corner of El Camino and Vila Rosas, right up as a 7-Eleven, where a lot of homeless people decide that's where they want to get their sustenance. And then they come, they wander over to my building, which is an open-plan building with, so it's not, so they can sleep. And I've had many tenants call me and say, there's a homeless person sleeping in front of my door, and I cannot get in and step over them and come and get them off. And I'm 84 years of age, and I can't do it anymore. I used to do it. But I was, I was, I came here with the idea that I was going to support this amendment. And then I found out that I learned something that it was relating to public spaces. And then I spoke to your great Assistant Chief, and he said, oh, hang, hang on a minute, that there's a distinction here that will allow the police to come onto your property, private property, and remove them. So there's a lot of complexities with this. When I heard that, I said, okay, I'm going to support it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. So going back to the council, we've got Councilmember Joyce.
I didn't know. Does staff want to address anything that was brought up?
Oh, yes. Would you like to address any of the issues that were brought up, Captain?
All right. The only thing that stood out was the idea that, or maybe a misconception in my hearing of this, is that there's going to be a proactive looking for this. And I just want to reassure, reassure the council and the public that we have no intent of having a proactive model to find encampments. We are responding to complaints and requests from the community. When people call in, business owners, residents call in, that's when our officers respond. So there is no proactive model being in place. The second thing that I would like to add is that our officers have an expectation to treat people with dignity, respect, humanity, compassion. And by and large, you know, and even from Mr. McNamara's statement from Brother Benno's and his confidence in seeing our officers do that. If this is implemented, we have a draft training bulletin prepared. And some of the things that we're going to be directing and training our officers to do is before conducting enforcement action, to consider factors, including the individual's health and safety that they're contacting, the weather conditions, the impact on safety in the surrounding community, the actual availability of shelter spaces, compliance of the individual involved, and the number of times they've been contacted. Each contact is individual and varies in a lot of ways. And we train our officers, but we also give them discretion because we believe that they will treat people humanely with compassion and kindness, but also take enforcement action when they deem necessary.
May I add a couple of quick comments, just to correct a couple of things I heard in the public testimony. Mr. Frazier talked about changes related to private property. That is not accurate. There are no changes in this ordinance related to camping on private property. That's a separate section. There was a comment that we're authorizing the destruction of private property. There are very detailed provisions in this ordinance related to the requirement to impound private property if it's not moved after the required notice, whether it be 24 or 48. There's, those are all set forth in 20.21.2 subsection D4. I'm sorry, D1 through 4, 1 through 5, I should say. So there's no destruction of personal property that's authorized. There was another comment that we're changing the definition of camping, and we are not. The only change is really, and this is a policy call for the council if you want to do this or not, but there's no changes related to the definition of camping. This is simply making it more like the ordinance we had before the Boise decision.
Thank you. Councilmember Joyce?
Another one that was brought up was the, the problem that it didn't come to the CRC or the Housing Commission prior to review for the council, given that it's such a big impact to a vulnerable population. And the Housing Commission has homelessness under their purview. Does staff have a reason why it only came to the Police and Fire Commission?
Honorable Mayor and council members, generally when we bring a policy matter forward, there is typically one commission that is best suited to review and make a recommendation on an ordinance as opposed to having multiple commissions review something and potentially having various recommendations come into this body. Because this action before you tonight essentially involves a public safety response, we did feel it was most suited to go to the Police and Fire Commission. Certainly, we could have taken it to those commissions as an informational item at some point. But we certainly wouldn't feel comfortable having those bodies make a recommendation and, again, having multiple commissions making a recommendation on a particular item.
Okay. So I'll just say that the CRC, they don't have a primary responsibility to any content that is not overseen by any other commission. So I think we need to look at what they oversee because they're always going to be seeing something that other commissions will weigh in on. Be that, I think my time is running. So we did hear from business owners tonight, and I want to thank you for coming. But from what I understand, there's little reason to think that ticketing folks would prevent them, prevent any of the very real safety concerns that you have and you brought forward. Those issues are much more comprehensive than can be addressed through tonight's proposal. So even if it passes, I don't want you to hold this expectation that all of a sudden major shifts are going to change. In fact, that was even brought up in the presentation, that this isn't going to be a major shift according to the proposal. I heard, so just generally, I think it's, I think it's really clear from the fact that we're getting this proposal, that we just lack a comprehensive strategy on homelessness, that we have several one-off programs that don't always interact with each other. We have a homeless services manager position that is sitting unfund, I mean, funded but unfilled. That would be the person that would coordinate all of our homelessness services. We have a shelter that will only take some referrals from very specific people, not at night. And they still, even with all those restrictions, they're full. They're still full. And if the shelter is full and we want to use enforcement to get folks into services, where are they going to go? The riverbed, the shadows, the same shadows that we just had two people murdered in the last week. I don't blame OPD for asking us to take action on this. They are receiving the calls. And I know that they have, I have full confidence that they act with respect to human dignity where they interact with people. But they didn't sign up for this. They signed up to serve the community, and they're having to deal with this problem because we have not. I don't think that they want to move people along, but I do think that will be the result of a shift in this policy. I also don't blame our housing staff because I don't think they've been fully staffed to deal with the comprehensive response that we should be providing to homelessness either. We have failed to provide this response. And we've failed to provide social workers who lead this response because they're the ones that actually understand homelessness and how to get people out of it. We've also failed to create enough safe places where people can come out of the shadows, namely a safer shelter or sheltering options or transitional housing after that. Because once you're in the shelter, if you, if you have to be out in a couple of weeks, it's not enough for folks. I need my colleagues to realize that this is not the solution. I hear frequently that people on the street refuse service, but this proposal removes the requirement to even offer that shelter to the unsheltered, which I think is not a morally defensible stance. So I make a motion to send this back to staff as part of a comprehensive revision of our homelessness plan. It can come forward with other, other actions that would include a plan for increasing our shelter options for the 1,000 unsheltered residents of Oceanside. It would also adhere, bring back a plan on how we would adhere to the continuum of care that is recommended by all agencies who are in this response. We can't just act in a way that's going to create more community harm and worsen the homelessness situation and make folks harder to reach. This has to be a comprehensive response. And everyone here is demanding that. Thank you.
I'll go ahead and second that. For discussion, Councilmember Robinson and Councilmember Weiss.
I guess I didn't throw another motion in there fast enough. Do you, you realize that if it wasn't for seven lines of text, we wouldn't even be talking about this? We'd just be doing the same old thing. Cops would be out doing what they do. All this is dealing with is it's giving our officers an opportunity to deal with those individuals. And let me, let me go back for a second. I heard a couple terms several times that kind of bothered me, talking about police sweeps. Captain, do our police department, do you guys go out and sweep areas for homeless?
No, we don't sweep for homeless. We have a response on encampment detail where we would go out and post a larger encampment site. We'd give them notice. It's currently at 48 hours. And then we'd come back and, and clean up the encampment. But that's more of a cleanup task than it is an enforcement task.
Right. But when we, people talk about sweeps, it implies that we're going down the street, sweeping homeless off the street. And I don't think that's what happens. I'm really glad a lot of our churches showed up. They talk about compassion. The truth is, our churches, our religious organizations play a large role often in helping those, fill those gaps that we as a city can't, or we don't have the capacity to do. So I appreciate that. But allowing somebody to sleep in a sidewalk during the, and this isn't so much at night. Remember, these, listen to our business people. They're talking about, they come in to open their business during the day, and there's people sleeping in front of their business door or other activities. What this, all this does is allows them to call OPD and gives an officer the ability to take some action. And typically, it's with people that they've had, and Captain, correct me if I'm wrong on this, numerous contacts. So those individuals, one-offs that you've dealt with, you, an officer may have multiple contacts, and now they, they come and say, look, we've told you, you can't sleep in front of Tan's Donuts in the middle of the day, blanket or sleeping bag or whatever because you, you impact this, that's a victim. The donut shop, the owners are a victim. The people in Copperwood are a victim. It just allows them to finally take some action to move them out of that. Am I right? So I really don't see this as a, this isn't designed to be the homeless plan. And I get your passion for it, council member, but this is just asking us to give them the tool based on our governor's direction. And some people may disagree with it, but I don't see anything wrong with it. Now, I can support you wanting to look ahead at some other, some, trying to develop a comprehensive plan for homelessness. We can talk about it. We can come up with it. But I don't think what we're doing tonight to send it back and send it to other committees does any good. And I'm not going to support your motion the way you made it. I would support staff's recommendation, however.
Councilmember Weiss?
Captain, we currently have two hot teams that have social workers. Is that correct?
That is correct, sir.
Are we getting rid of the social workers?
No, sir.
So there still will be social workers making contact with our homeless population, trying to get them into services and programs that would be, would benefit them in some way?
Correct. Councilmember Weiss, rest of the council, there is no plan to change any service model or deployment model for our homeless outreach team.
Thank you. Do you feel that this change that you're proposing gives you more tools in the toolbox to be more effective?
Yes, sir, I do. The reason why is it gives, when the community calls the police department and expects a result, whether it's a private residence or a business, when our typical patrol officer does not have the access, the capability, or the training to even offer or complete the intake into a shelter, there is no enforcement for the, the public encampment ordinance. They're not able to complete or comply with that subsection G as is written now. So their options are limited. Staff at the police department believes that this could be a tool, for the examples I laid out, especially highlighting homeless court, where we do encounter a lot of service-resistant individuals within the homeless population, and perhaps that could be a tipping point where someone is incentivized or encouraged enough to have a fee waived or a warrant cleared if they were only to work with a case manager. And we believe that plugging someone into that, that pathway towards permanent housing could do that, and if enforcement is one of those tools, and we acknowledge the fact that, that homelessness is very complex and nuanced, but this is just one tool, and we're not saying this is the tool. This is just an option that, that would allow our officers to take a different step that's not available right now.
Thank you. You know, I, I think we all need to recognize that the challenges of homelessness affect more than just people living on the streets, as we've heard from some of those businesses. I mean, helping Oceanside's homeless has been a city priority, as it should be. They lack shelter, which is a basic human need, and typically face economic or health problems. Sometimes the worst among them prey on their fellows with violence and theft. Alcohol and drugs are a constant specter in temptation. That people live in those circumstances is unacceptable. It is also human nature to want to provide aid, but aid without accountability also fails. Yeah, there are families and people who have had some bad breaks and want nothing more than, than to get back on their feet, but there are also people out there who willfully remove themselves from society, demonstrate unacceptable behavior, and commit crimes that harm the rest of the community. Even when there aren't crimes, human camping in public places almost, almost always winds up with trash, human waste, and other issues that are a problem. Having compassion does not require tolerating or enabling destructive behavior. We need to be clear that sleeping on the street is not acceptable, nor are theft, violence, and trashing public places. We have to make it increasingly uncomfortable for the homeless to disrupt public spaces so that they have a greater motivation to seek out the services that provide housing, food, job training, healthcare, and treatment of addiction. There are services out there, we just got to get them into it. So I will make a substitute motion to approve staff's recommendation.
There's a substitute motion that has been seconded. Councilmember Robinson?
Thank you. The, the one part that I, that we left because we get so focused on the people, which we should, but it's also about the personal effects, and I can tell you, you go down in the industrial park, down between District One and District Two, you go out in the valley places, and you'll see a shopping cart, which is stolen, filled with stuff, and it'll be sitting there for days. And I think part of this does deal with the ability to move that stuff off the street faster, and, and I think that's also one of the things that I often hear from my constituents about, you know, why does this stuff get to sit here? Why, why aren't you cleaning up our streets? So that, am I correct in assuming that?
Yes, Councilman Robinson. So when we do these cleanups, the, the posting requirements, typically, they're geared towards the larger, more established encampments, and this allows time for the occupants of those encampments to pack their stuff up and leave. As far as staff is concerned, it is less efficient to wait 48 hours, sometimes over a weekend, and more complaints are coming in, and, and we believe at this point, if we were to post and be able to come back 24 hours later, it still accommodates the individual, but also promotes a more efficient model for our encampment details.
Captain Garrett? I have been receiving a lot of calls, emails about more and more homeless that are coming into our neighborhoods, especially in our eastern part of the city, even into tri-city area, but the RDO area. And this is, this is a movement. This is movement of folks who are being moved and asked to move from the downtown area, most probably, and they're being moved away, they're, they're moving away from services and away from other people. Sometimes it's a one-person kind of a thing. But say somebody calls you and says, "Hey, there's this homeless person, and, and I'm very concerned about this person," and you have this ability to contact him and ticket him, what else would you be doing at that point if you're not calling to take him to the shelter?
Yes, Honorable Mayor Sanchez, we will provide all our, we currently do provide all our officers with a, it is a tri-fold pamphlet.
All right, let me, let me ask a more specific question. If they say, "I'm not, and I don't want any services," let's just say that, because you've not established a relationship, what seems to be very critical, right? And so they're saying, "No, you give, you get to the point of a citation." Once you give them a citation, what do you do? Besides the information, what do you do physically with that person?
Physically, nothing.
So you're giving him a citation. We've all heard the stories about some folks just tearing up the citation. Are you able to move that person somewhere else?
It's a complex situation with a lot of variables in it. Say, if, if someone doesn't have an ID, you can make a custodial, what's called an arrest, and bring them back to the Oceanside Police Station to attempt ID. That would be a really rare circumstance. We do have technology that allows us to identify someone in the field, but absent more factors in that, we would not, there are sections in the penal code for crimes likely to continue. Our sheriff's department and our jails will not accept booking on that type of thing. So in all reality, as it stands now...
You wouldn't be able to do anything about that person, basically, besides a citation if they are not going to be accepting services, correct? Or a piece of paper that says, "Here are services," because at that point, you're not contacting the homeless shelter.
Officers can contact our homeless outreach team out in the field, who, who can guide them through the steps, but without knowing like variables, I mean, like I've said before, it's very complex and very nuanced where...
Right, right.
It's tough to give a...
Right. So, so I guess this is what I'm saying. I think people are, I think we're, we're in danger of giving people the sense that while this is a tool, another tool in the toolbox for OPD, especially for those who are not on the hot team, a police officer not on the hot team, it's not really doing anything to address what residents out there in the, in the eastern part of the city expect. I think that the community expects us to address our homeless issues, period. I think people are, some people are here, like Mr. Seffo, because, you know, and some of the business owners, because they think that somehow, some, this is going to help take that person and put them somewhere else, and I don't think that's what's going to happen here. I think, and I think the, there, there is a motion that I'm going to be making amendment to, but basically, the, I do believe that the second part of, of Councilmember Joyce's original motion, to, to send this back and to, to staff and come up with a more comprehensive plan, especially reviewing, we've just had the shelter, it's been over, open for a little over a year, tweaking that because when the, when the council was presented with the shelter, there were two things that, that were done. One, chosen the operator, but secondly, chosen the actual model. And tweaking it maybe is better than, you know, two, three weeks in a shelter versus up to 180 days, completely different kind of situation. I would really like for us, I'd like to add to the motion per amendment and say, send this back to staff, come up with a comprehensive plan, working with the community, because we understand, I just heard 400 people are wanting to come and help us figure out a better way of addressing our homeless, whether we're going to completely address homeless to the point of having nobody on our streets. I mean, that, I don't think any city has come up with that solution, but certainly, we can do better. And certainly, we shouldn't be just moving people around. So my, my amendment to this, to, there is a current motion, but I make amendment that we send this back to staff with direction to have a workshop with experts in the field, of course, staff, open to the public at a time when the public can come and comment and help. For us to come back with a more comprehensive plan, there might be, for example, gaps that we can fill, but, but that would be my motion. We do have, we do spend 11 to 15 million dollars a year on homeless. We can, we can reprioritize. So that would be my amendment. Okay, I'm, I'm hearing a second, but I think that, that, I heard that, you know, okay, I'm not, I'm not against doing that, so I hope that we can do this. I think, I think what I heard, Councilmember Robinson, was you were not happy with the first part of the motion, but you would be willing to support the second part of Councilmember Joyce's motion, and we're all here, we want to do a better job. So that would be my amendment.
Mayor, can I be heard briefly? My recollection is that Mr. Joyce made a motion that you seconded. Can the clerk confirm that?
That is...
Which was essentially to send it back to staff and develop a more comprehensive plan, paraphrasing.
Right.
And then there was a...
And there was a substitute motion.
Substitute motion, which really is a motion to amend. And so what we've typically done in these situations is vote on the motion that's been seconded and then consider the, the next motion. That's how I'd recommend you proceed.
It is different than a, than a motion to amend, though.
Not in our rules.
Okay, well, that's, I've, I've heard it both ways, but we could do that.
Unless you're willing to withdraw your motion and then just vote on the, the Mr. Weiss's motion with, with the amendment, assuming he's, that's, he's accepted that.
Do we vote on clarity?
Yeah, I think for clarity of the record, what I would recommend is that you, you vote on the motion that's been seconded and then entertain the next motion, because I think it's a little jumbled right now.
Yeah, we could do that.
Okay. So we're voting on the original motion by Councilmember Joyce?
On the original motion.
Which had a second.
Yes.
Which had a second by Mayor Sanchez. The substitute motion was effectively undoing that motion.
All right, please vote.
Wait, wait, wait. Hold on.
Well, not the whole, you, you just recently. So did you want to speak to the original motion, or did you want to speak to the amendment?
I'd like to speak to the second presentation, ask questions, please. I couldn't, I, may I speak?
Okay. I'm asking you, did you want to speak to the original motion or to the amendment to the motion?
I want to speak about the item and ask questions.
All right. Mr. Kime, yes?
Just real quick, I want to go, this is something, especially with my career before this with the police department, I've spent years, I've been in every different area of the city that we've had homeless encampments built, many relationships with the homeless individuals. So when I came on council, it was a priority that we started doing things. Our city, we've shouldered, I think, the low to North County with Escondido for the homeless crisis for decades. So we, we took real steps. We opened the first year-round homeless shelter. I mean, I'm going to ask a couple of questions for staff. Can we just name a couple of the big things we've done to, to actually provide compassionate resources to those that will accept them? I think this gets overlooked.
Honorable Mayor and council members, yes. I mean, I would say first and foremost, and certainly not the first thing that we did, but of course, opening the 50-bed shelter, I think, was a, a very big move here, and we continue to work with the shelter operator to address some of the concerns that were raised this morning. Obviously, we have a long history of providing various social services, whether it's supportive housing, whether it's transitional housing, whether it's, probably, it's, it's a long list.
We've moved, we're moving forward with a safe parking lot?
Yes, we are, actually. We, I think we finally landed on a spot that we, looks is very promising, and we'll be sharing that with council very soon as well.
I just, I know it's a broad statement, but safe to say, we've done a lot more than a lot of other cities nearby, correct?
I would agree with that 100%.
And I, and that's important to us, and I mean, we, it's important to us that we provide those compassionate services. I, I, it's, I don't want to criminalize homelessness, and a ticket doesn't solve this, but we have a duty to our residents to keep them safe. We have a duty. We forget, we have, whether it's 400, 600, 1,000 unsheltered homeless, we have 176,000 other people that deserve to walk down the sidewalk, that deserve to take their kids to school, deserve to feel safe in their parks, at the beach. We, I'm going, I'm going to use an example, we had a, a large homeless encampment on Oceanside Boulevard a few years ago. These are some of the incidents that we had. We had four fentanyl overdoses in one day. We had assault with a deadly weapon, we had domestic violence, we had theft, we had the businesses being harassed in the shopping center. I heard about it daily. That's not okay. We need to provide those services, but we have to protect our residents and businesses, and we can do both, and by giving our officers one more tool, and I think this tool, it's not going to, we're not, no one's going to go to jail for this, I think that's very clear, but if we can use this to connect that person to services, a social worker, and have another tool, we, we need to do that. It is not okay to have those type of incidents. Several, several years ago, we had a business owner, a dentist, who came in and said that in the eastern part of the city, he had, there's several large encampments behind his practice. Over the weeks, he had people coming in while he was treating patients, rummaging through his cabinets, harassing his staff. So I drove out there the next day to take pictures, and there was multiple large encampments. I was, I got screamed at by someone who was in an encampment, and he threatened me and came up and threw the fence, and it ended up being someone I knew from my time as a police officer. This is a former gang member, a parolee with a very violent history. I had a good relationship with him, luckily. I asked him, "Can we take you to a shelter?" "I will take you now." "No." I said, "Okay, I'll take you Monday morning." "No." We have to be able to address those problems. We have to, we have to do a better job, and I think you're seeing that through the state. We have to do a better job in the state of doing that. It's our number-one job on city council, is to keep our city safe, and we, we have to do that. And again, this is not about criminalizing homelessness, but we have to have law and order in our city, and I am, we, we need to do a better job of being creative. I don't, we need to get our homeless coordinator, which was a priority for me, to get there and have creative solutions and connect our residents into services. But, I mean, tomorrow, if we have another encampment with 100 people, and we have those same issues, fentanyl overdoses, violent crimes, theft, all of those things, we have to, our officers have to have the tool to clean that up and address it, and if we don't have a shelter bed for every one of those, we still can't let that activity continue. Any, a large grouping, a large homeless encampment, unfortunately, that stuff is very common. I've seen it daily. I have been in and out of these homeless encampments, and it's very unfortunate, especially with so many of them suffering from substance abuse or mental illness. As you've seen this week, it's not safe, our, our homeless encampments are the most dangerous for the people living in them, and we have to do better. So this is, this is not going to fix things, and I want to make sure, this, this will not fix things. I can't solve, and if any politician tells you here that they can solve homelessness on a city council, they're not, they're lying to you. We can make our city safer, and we can provide better services, though, and we can do both, and we're doing them. I mean, we have really made that commitment in our city to open that homeless shelter, and we got a lot of pushback. People were afraid it would cause issues. It was important to do. We got pushed back with our, our safe sleeping site. We're doing it. We're going to provide those, but we have to enforce our laws. So I'm going to support staff's recommendation, but I also want, this, the, the goal is not to give somebody a criminal record or to put them in jail, it's to give us another tool to nudge someone into services, connect them with a social worker, connect them to mental health or substance abuse treatment. And I think what concerns me with this motions and alternate motions is I, you know, Mayor, take a stand, what do we need to do to fix this? Have a strategy. Let's do something to make an impact. And staff, we have a fantastic police department. I think they, they use their best judgment, they treat people's dignity and respect, and they're going to continue to do that, and lead with a compassionate approach, and I want to give them the tools and the support to do it, and be very clear about that today.
So, most of the things that we have done for the City of Oceanside predate 2019. This homeless shelter was already something that we were working on, we were looking for a place. The fact that we happened to finally find a place is something that... The fact that we happened to finally find a place is something that materialized and we moved forward. Many of the things, in fact, most of them, except for Greenbrier Village, everything that we've done has predated 2019. I say that because that's when Councilmember Kime was put on the council, appointed to the council, was in 2019, so-
Mayor, you voted against the homeless shelter-
I basically-
And now you take credit for it.
I voted for the shelter, I voted against the operator. I also, I also did a lot to move that forward. I also, as mayor, I worked really hard with the county to get the social workers, to get the mental health specialists, because we were not getting those. And I worked really closely with our county representative to make that happen. So with, through Interfaith, Interfaith agreed to be working with the city in this contract. We're not the county, we don't have our own social worker program, we don't have our own mental health, that is from the county, and we need to get more of those folks from the county. We need to get the county. One of the things that I pressed on the county was, because they have the funding that they did not spend for many years, did not do anything for homeless, anything for our mental health, this is why we're behind countywide. So I recommended to the county, to our county supervisor, that we come up with some kind of a, a plan to increase the number of students taking, becoming social workers, mental health workers, because this is the demand that we have, especially in Oceanside, and I was, and definitely was advocating for Oceanside. But yes, we do have to make everyone safe, including our homeless, and I'm very saddened that we've had these homicides in very dark places, not, not in public places, dark places. And I have full confidence in our police department that we're going to find those responsible. But right now, what we have before us is basically the ability to contact a person without having to call the shelter, without having to call anybody, sometime in the middle of the night, when it's not happening, okay, to be able to contact a homeless person. But what we're finding out here tonight is that nothing would happen to that person, and that's a false sense of hope here. Shopkeeper, you call police, and yes, they'll be able to contact that person, give them a ticket even, but not be able to move that person away. We need to find a better, better solutions. I believe that we can do this, do a lot better job than we're doing now, and that's why I think we ought to send this to, to staff with direction to cut, to come back with a workshop with experts in this field to do a better job, because I know that we can. We do have a motion and a second, please vote.
I still, I still have time, we have other-
I need to clarify, we have a moment for that.
Well, I'd also like to clarify the exact, the motions, it's gotten very convoluted, I just want to know exactly what we're voting on.
All right. I want to make this easier. I'm withdrawing my second for the first motion, we've got, now got the second motion on, all right? So the second motion is with my amendment, and we have to vote on the amendment first.
Okay, so can-
So, the amendment is for the workshop. So it is staff's recommendation plus the workshop. Are we clear on that amendment?
Okay, so it's, I'm sorry, just wanted to make sure.
Councilmember Robinson, is your, is your microphone on?
It is now, thank you. So the way the motion stands, is that we would be voting to approve staff recommendation.
First, the amendment, and then the main motion. The main motion-
Do you agree?
Was Peter's motion, wasn't it Peter's motion?
Yeah.
Yeah, to move staff's recommendation, and there was a second.
Okay.
So that's the main motion, okay? I've asked for an amendment.
Okay.
So the amendment needs to be voted on first, and then the main motion.
Yeah.
So if the main mo, so if the amendment gets voted in, then the main motion becomes that plus the amended, amended part.
So, council members, I think I could provide some clarification here, if I can. The president's of motions is set out in our municipal code, section 2.1.45, which details the president's of motions that are on the floor. An amendment motion takes precedence over the main motion. So the main motion was made by Councilmember Weiss and seconded by Councilmember Robinson. Mayor Sanchez made an amendment to that motion, which was seconded by Councilmember Joyce. Based on the ordinance and the president's of motions, the council has to vote on the amendment first, and then we vote on the main motion, and hopefully I made that somewhat clearer.
Regardless of the outcome of the-
So if the amendment to the main motion fails, then the council will then vote on the main motion without the amendment, because that amendment motion has failed.
It's bundled still, it's bundled with the initial motion.
Unless I'm speaking wrong.
No, you're voting right now on the motion to amend the main motion, and then if that passes, you're going to vote on it as amended.
Now said three different ways.
Yep.
Okay. But your amendment to, to staff is just, without a lot of direction, is just, go ba, go back-
No, for a workshop.
For a workshop. I mean, basically, your amendment is just to come up with a workshop for homelessness.
On homelessness, and with the, at a time, at a time when the public can-
I get all the bubbly details, I just want to make sure-
Yes.
It's-
But it's with staff's recommendation, I-
Staff would come back in the workshop?
No.
Yeah, no.
No.
No. No, not his motion. His motion was staff's recommendation, and the amendment is, is, is the part that you basically had.
The main motion was to introduce the ordinance. The amendment is to direct staff to conduct the workshop as previously directed, so unless the maker of the motion is agreeable to that amendment, in which case, we don't need to vote, excuse me, but if he's not, then we need to vote on the amendment and then the main motion as amended.
Right. So, Councilmember Joyce, you have your light on, did you want to speak one more time before?
Yeah, I did.
Okay.
It was brought up that we can't solve homelessness from here, but that doesn't mean we should just throw our hands up. It doesn't mean we should just give up on all the tools that we know actually work. Our offices, do our officers right now have a tool to, to clear encampments? Are encampments cleared right now? Because it's, it just was made to sound like we don't have that tool right now.
It's reduced from 48 hours to 24 hours, right?
I just want to be clear for the public.
Correct. Councilmember Joyce, yes, we do have the ability to clear encampments now when posted for 48 hours.
Okay. And the problem that I heard articulated was that a typical police officer can't just offer shelter because of our model, because of the model that we have set up right now, that they don't have access to the system, that they don't have permission from our operator of our shelter, and those are all issues with our model. So the solve for our model is to now just take that out, take out the humane response part of our dual language here, and just give the pathway to enforcement. So I just want to be very clear about what's happening here. If, if we're complaining that people are refusing services, but now we're going to not offer them, it seems backwards. If people call to clear an encampment out of sight, they're harder to get out of homelessness because we lose track of them.
Just follow up on that. So say hypothetically, we did have a big, a large encampment, like the one we did on Oceanside Boulevard, say we didn't have enough shelter beds or enough motel vouchers. Currently, with the way our ordinance is, could we address that encampment and, and clean it up? Or would this allow us to do that and address really emergent situations?
So, yes, Deputy Mayor Kime, the, there, there are two separate, the point one and the point two are two separate sections.
Correct.
So the point two deals specifically with storage of personal property on public spaces, and that's what we are posting for. So the encampment itself is, is a different ordinance that we could enforce under the current ordinance if shelter beds were available and they refused.
So, and also to clear this up, are we operationally, are we still going to go out there and our, our priority is to offer services?
Yes, Deputy Mayor Kime, our, our priority is to approach this with, with solutions, and we're, like I mentioned in the presentations, there is no, we don't imagine that this is going to solve the problem of homelessness, it is way too big and complex. We, we simply advocate that this is a tool to solve a call for service in that given moment for that resident, for that business owner who's calling about an, an incident occurring right there, that this officer can, can maybe have a positive impact for that. That would, that would be the tool.
And I want to, I want to make that clear, it's, it's a priority for me that we continue offering our services, but we need our, we need to have, our officers have every available tool to keep our city safe. And I think, I'll, we're not throwing our hands up at all. We're saying that I cannot solve the entire homeless crisis for Oceanside, and we're, in fact, we're doing the exact opposite in our city by not throwing our hands up. And I'm, I am looking forward to partnering with Councilmember Joyce and the rest of the council to make sure we have a successful safe parking lot, a successful shelter, and do those things, and work on what we can, we just have to be realistic of what, what we can do in our sphere of influence in Oceanside. But I, I am hopeful that we can actually make some good progress, especially if this passes tonight, we have a workshop, I, I think that would also be very important.
All right, we have the amendment, did you want to speak one more time?
I would just say, we, I've been asking for that, and this is the first thing that comes forward, without revising, without revising our services, without looking at our model, without doing all the things that we know, again, work.
We, we definitely need to, to do, excuse me, sir, we definitely have to, we, we definitely can do things better. Obviously, we're not satisfying the public, obviously, when I get these calls and emails, and I'm out there, and there's, nothing much is going to change from that contact, nothing, except that someone is going to be, an officer's going to give a citation, and that's, and that's it. So let's do this, let's do this workshop with the community, let's find better ways of doing this. We, we probably need more time at the shelter. Councilmember Joyce?
I apologize, just one more, can I offer one friendly amendment? And that would be, that would be that we get data monthly, if this passes, that we get data monthly on the updated enforcements of this, so that we understand the impact that it is having.
I, I think that would be added direction to staff-
I can go ahead and just provide that to you, I have that data, because the data the police department provides is going to be different than the number of cases, we have to actually file those cases if there's misdemeanors. So you're specifically referring, then, to the illegal encampment section, is that right? Well, because there's a variety of statutes that could be in play, all we're dealing with tonight is illegal encampment. We have laws against, you know, closing our parks, and we cite people who are in our parks after hours, sometimes they're homeless people. But I could provide to you the list of the encampment violations on a monthly basis, if that's helpful. Okay? So you don't need to vote, I'll just do it.
Okay, this is on the amendment to have the workshop, there, and, and that's it, and it's been seconded, so let's vote on the amendment, please.
Motion approved, 401, Weiss, no.
Thank you. Now the main motion includes, is, is now amended, and no other lights, let's vote on the main motion.
Staff's recommendation, correct?
Staff's recommendation amended to include the workshop.
A city attorney has to introduce the ordinance.
Yes.
This is the introduction of an ordinance to the city council of the City of Oceanside amending chapter 20 of the Oceanside City Code to incorporate changes regarding public encampment enforcement.
Please vote.
Motion approved, 401, Joyce, no.
All right, thank you. We are now at comments by the public on off-agenda topics. We do have advanced request to speak by Nathan Lacy. Is Nathan Lacy here? So Nathan Lacy's not here, let's go to item number 27, which is communications from the public regarding, items on, on this agenda that, that were not advanced. Oh, are you Nathan Lacy?
Yes, I'm Nathan, Nathan.
You're Nathan Lacy?
Nathan Stinson.
Lacy.
No, no.
Okay, so could, how many people do we have?
We have 12 speakers on off-agenda items.
12 speakers. Why don't we just go ahead and get started on them, because I think we have less than that. So Wendy Bravo, you still here? Doesn't look like it. Jimmy Knott, you're here. Afterward, Shelley Parker, I see Shelley. Diane Nygaard, I don't see Diane Nygaard.
She's here.
Oh, okay, sorry.
She's behind the chair.
Yeah, behind that chair. Mr. Knott.
Mayor, council members, Jimmy Knott, 127 Cherry Lane, Los Angeles Mobile Village, homeowners rep. I want to take and give a little bit of advanced news, and this has been basically on the law since, well, since 2020. But I want to remind people that, starting January 1, 2025, if you live in a mobile home park and you're underneath a private lease into that park, your park, for the most part, you will be converted over to rent control under certain provisions. I have brought these note here, and this is posted online, I believe, Director Hines, Director Hines, posted online, correct? And this has been posted online, and you can reference it at home if you want to, and you can find out exactly all the and if's and buts, because there may be some questions, and there are some people that it will, you know, technically apply, like say if a park owner owns their own mobile or something like that. But for everybody that is under a lease, you will take and be converted over to rent control. And all long-term leases will be set to expire January 1, so this is due to state law, and you should start ma, you know, making sure that you're familiar with 16B, which is our rent control ordinance. And if you want to get an advance, is start attending the Manufactured Home Fair Practices Commission, that way you become better informed about it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is, it's me, Shelley Parker. Yes.
Good evening, wow, okay, 8 o'clock. I live in Rancho San Luis Rey, I'm on the Housing Commission, and I also am the State Treasurer for GSMOL, Golden State Manufactured Fair Practices. First, I want to say thank you to Mr. Robinson for his note at the last council meeting, and also for response to my email for his apology, so thank you very much. Another thing I'd like to say, it does not affect Oceanside, but the things, the, the, there are some misconceptions, and GSMOL is a C4 organization, we work at the state, county, and city level, and there was an, an amazing thing that happened in Santa Barbara County this last week. The GSMOL chapters and leaders got together and managed to get Santa Barbara County supervisors to place a moratorium to stop park owners from converting senior mobile home parks into family parks in order for the GSMOL to write a senior overlay to protect- into family parks in order for the GSMOL to write a senior overlay to protect the senior housing in Santa Barbara County. Now, we are blessed here. We have rent control and we have senior, a senior overlay. But I'm going to come here and educate everybody that sits in this room, regardless of what side you're on, what the organization that has been around for the last 60 years has done. And we need this C4 organization. We are working with our state legislators to pass ordinances to protect people. And we are, the, we are supporting this AB, the last one that Jimmy, Jimmy Not said, we, we, sorry, it's late. And, and we work to, to support and pass that and put a lot of time and energy in it. And as I've said before, and I will say it again, there is room for everybody at this table to work to protect mobile home, residence and people who own mobile homes because we have invested in this city and in every city in this state, our hard-earned money to provide affordable housing for, for ourselves. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Parker. Ms. Nygaard, followed by Sandy Beal, followed by Nathan.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council, Diane Nygaard. And I'm here tonight representing our Save Our Farmland Coalition. I actually came tonight to apologize. The last meeting, we chastised several of you for not responding to our survey. And after the meeting, we learned that not all of you had actually received the survey, so of course you couldn't have responded to it. So we apologize for misspeaking at the meeting. But now you all have received the survey and the results are still the same. We appreciate that Councilmember Robinson responded that he declined to answer because he thinks that saving farmland is more complex than a simple yes or no answer. We respectfully disagree with that. We think the question was pretty straightforward. Do you commit to preserving our farmland? And we thank you, Mayor Sanchez, again, for being the single member of this council who's made that commitment to the community. And we hope that the rest of you, when this issue comes back before you, will have a change of heart. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sandy Beal, followed by Nathan.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Sanchez and City Councilmembers. My name is Sandy Beal and I live, I live in Rancho San Luis Rey Mobile Home Park where I am the homeowners president and also the City of Oceanside resident designee. In June, a person who works closely with our owner, John Saunders, said that in a few months, they would be sending out a subdivision survey to all of the homeowners in Rancho San Luis Rey. The beginning of July, the homeowners board, along with Gizmo Board, decided to take a survey of our own regarding subdivision. Many volunteers walked door to door in the park to explain subdivision, our survey and what subdivision would do to rent control. There are 433 homes in our park. 30 of those homes are owned by John Saunders, so we visited 403 homeowners to talk to them about our survey. In the first week of July, we received 329 surveys saying no. Rancho San Luis Rey homeowners do not support subdivision. That is 82% of the homes we visited. The other 18% were either empty, on vacation, or people who simply do not answer their door. We sent a digital copy of our survey to Mayor Sanchez, Leilani Hines and Assistant City Attorney Barbara Hamilton. Fast forward two months. Every year, Rancho San Luis Rey homeowners send a letter to the owner of the park, John Saunders, to remind him that if he ever is selling, we're interested in purchasing, purchasing the park. On September 23rd, I received a letter from John Saunders saying, quote, "While we still have no interest in selling the park, we would consider subdividing the park so that the residents who wanted to buy their pads could do so. We believe this could be done in a way that the residents who do not wish to purchase their pads could return, retain their rent control status." Quote. We know that if even one homeowner purchases their, quote, "pad," we would lose rent control. John Saunders is dangerous because he will do anything he can to get rid of rent control so we can, so he can raise the rents in Rancho San Luis Rey to market value, which is currently $2,500 to $3,500 a month. We're a senior park with many veterans and people with disabilities. These people would be on the street if we lost rent control. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Nathan? Okay, no Nathan. Let's say Rosie Higera, followed by Richard Newton.
I'm Rosie Higera and I would like to address Eric Joyce's video on Facebook about me saying that I am a danger to children because at a school board meeting, which he was a school board member at, he passed a policy where boys who say that they're girls can go into girl-safe spaces like the bathroom, like sports, like the locker room. I did not harm your daughter. I used her as an illustration that the policies and procedures that you pass will hurt your own daughter. And I looked over the tape today and your daughter's face didn't even show. And I got it off of your public Facebook page because you are a public servant. Anyhow, you say that I am a danger to children and society, but this is what you pushed while you were on the school board meeting. I tried for four years to get this filth out of the school libraries with our tax dollars and you absolutely refuse. You think it is appropriate for minors to see this filth. And you believe in open borders. So I don't know how you're talking about compassionate care to homeless when you aid and abet illegal aliens that invade our border and you help them and they bring into, you bring them into our community and you feed them and you help process them. That does not make our community safe at all, Eric Joyce. All of this stuff that you're teaching, transmutilation of genitals, all of this leads to an agenda of death and destruction, and that is what us parents are fighting.
I'm asking that these, that these not be shown. K O C T.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you.
But I would like to, yes, this is the stuff that you're pushing our kids and that is the end result is destruction of innocent children, mutilating their bodies and keeping secrets from parents. So Eric Joyce, I'd like to ask you, who is the danger to children? You have policies that are very dangerous to our children, to our community, to our safety. You, you have said on record at the school board that we have imaginary borders. We have borders there to protect our people. So who is the globalist? Who is for fentanyl running across our border because we have a closed border? And you say you want to help people, yet you voted, the very first point of order was giving for pot shops, marijuana permits in our city? That's what you bring to our council and our city? Please, Eric Joyce, we deserve better than you.
Ma'am, that is really, really outrageous. Please finish your comments.
That is my free speech. So I ask you, who is the danger?
Just let her. Thank you very much.
Do you have anything to say, Eric Joyce?
Roger Furnival. Sorry, Richard Newton. Point of personal privilege.
First, I'd like to point out that the-
No, it's my turn.
So we, we adopted policies that reflect state law to keep people safe, to keep all of our kids safe in schools. The reason that that video doesn't show my daughter, my four-year-old daughter's face and her name, which you put on the pictures, is because K O C T had to edit that for her That video still exists. The context-
Ma'am, ma'am, you are out of order. Please have a seat.
The context is really important. The context is important because it's not just using somebody's child to make a political point. It's also the constant threats that we were under throughout the entire time, including somebody I believe you're married to, constantly referencing us being drowned. Being drowned.
Ma'am, you are out of order. I am asking to leave now.
Those constant threats have-
I'm asking to leave.
They have serious consequences-
Please escort her out.
For our families. We don't feel safe with that and that's real. Those consequences are real. The things you say matter. We need to get back to a world where people take responsibility for those things.
Thank you, Mr. Newton. You're next. Followed by Roger Furnival.
I'd like to begin by pointing out that those pictures that the previous speaker presented to the public record are public record. We are all adults here and people that are watching this at home should see the public record. I've said this before, that you censor comments and you try to prevent people from the broader audience watching this on television from seeing all the facts. Mayor Sanchez, shame on you. So I'd like to speak about off agenda, item 28, that was already voted on the youth commission. Unfortunately, I got here a little too late to sign up for it. I don't mean to disparage the comments of the young public speakers. I thought they were very good comments.
I'm sorry, that was, that was an agenda topic. This is for off agenda topic.
I understand that. Off agenda, public record, I'm speaking about what I want to talk about. I want to talk about that. I know you already voted on it. Can I get a few more seconds on the clock, please? Kids are more manipulable to political powers and propaganda. It is documented that the human brain is not fully developed until the mid-20s. Kids don't face the tax burdens or face the consequences of any idealistic wish, wish they would impose on society. They cannot vote. Therefore, there's a reason for that. Recognition of age differences is enshrined in the United States Constitution. U.S. Representatives must be at least 25. Senators must be at least 30 and the president must be at least 35. I think it was the author, Daniel Bornstein, in his book, The Decline of American Democracy, that noted that politics is a competitive arena of resources, who gets them and who pays for them. It is foolish and poor policy to give those who face so little burdens for any municipal policies that they may want the power to have an influence on that. They are not even old enough to be able, to be held legally accountable for their own action. At a minimum, the focus of such commissions should be very limited and narrow in scope. Got another minute or so. The next item I want to bring up is Mayor Sanchez, you threw a lot of empty rhetoric out there about doing something about homelessness. There's nothing you can do about it here. It's a fundamental problem with those individuals. Your choices are arrest them, institutionalize them mentally ill, chase them out of the city or let them run wild as they do now. Reforming them costs way too much money to reverse their many bad choices they've made over their life. To become homeless, one must screw up in many major ways. They must screw up and fail in school.
So you already, you already spoke on that item.
They must destroy relations with family. They must be financially reckless and irresponsible. They get arrested and commit crimes to be unemployable and they use illegal drugs. It is a shame that a price must be paid for their, those mistakes, but it is fully proper that the cost of those mistakes be borne by the homeless individual who made those mistakes and not law-abiding taxpayers struggling to pay their own bills or have a quality of life in this city.
I'm grateful that you would know what you want.
I'm sorry, please do not speak.
Why don't you shut up and wait? Get up on the stand and make your own comments.
I'm sorry, sir. Please do not respond back. You're done. Thank you. Roger Furnival, followed by Guadalupe Rios, followed by Jett.
Madam Honorable Mayor, councilmembers, what I have to bring forward is not emotional, I hope. We'll find that out in a second.
And probably not on the agenda, right?
I'm not even sure if you're going to allow me to count myself as a, born in Oceanside because I was actually born on Camp Pendleton, so, you know.
Naval hospital.
There you go. Anyway, my gripe, and first of all, a little background, I spent 32 years in the Army. I bought a house here in 1983, I think, what, anyway, 30 odd years ago. I come back, Oceanside's changed a lot. Got back here in 2020, 2021, and sleepy little Oceanside with what it used to be is not what it is. What I'm asking for, and I've had friends come to visit me, hey, you're back in California. And they come to visit me and they go downtown and it's noisy with motorcycle noise. It's noisy with the lowrider with the big muffler that sounds like a cherry bomb on crack. I'm asking, in front of everybody, unbiased witnesses, what can we do to empower our police department to have noise abatement like in Carlsbad or Coronado or other fine places between Wisconsin and Surf Rider on, on South Coast Highway and between Horn and the pier? Those two main streets where people are walking, there's outside restaurants, everything's nice, then you hear, and they say to me, Roger, it's such a beautiful town. What, what? And I have no answer. I don't see any big signs that say noise abatement will be enforced. I don't see police officers out there writing the citation that matches the car. So having said all that, I'm asking all of you, especially you, Honorable Mayor, and personal note, I have eight granddaughters. They would all inspire to be like you. Not a joke, because you know, you're, you're a changer.
And they, they can go higher and higher.
No, that's enough. But what do we do to make the noise go away on those two major streets?
Thank you, Mr. Furnival. We have our Assistant Chief in the back there. That's Assistant Chief Fadovinos. He will meet with you right now and, and talk to you about that.
Okay.
Thank you. Guadalupe Rios? Nobody? Okay, how about Jett? Well, if it was Jim Woody, he would be handcuffing you. No, not really.
Okay, cool. I do apologize for my outburst. It was kind of like all I could do to not say something more negative because as humans, when we're frustrated, we want to see the other person suffer like we're suffering in response to their behavior. So I chose to say, I'm grateful that you have not had to experience the suffering and systemic oppression that leads to the horrors that is being unhoused. And I would say that to all of you who can attest to that in this room. I'm grateful that you have not experienced that. And I am flabbergasted chronically at the jungle gym, Olympic-style gymnastics that happens with your words, to say that you care when you do not see people as people if they are not funding your businesses, catering to your developers and doing things the way you want them done. The way that this society works in government is meant to hear us, is meant to collaborate with us. The fact that I heard Deputy Mayor Ryan Keim say that, oh, shoot, I named you and then I forgot what you said. My bad. Something like, no, I'll just move on. But it's just so frustrating that there can be a group of people who, oh, say that we, as a city council, cannot provide the solution for homelessness and yet, as a city council, vote on a solution or non-solution for homelessness. Listen to us. Thank you, Mayor, for amending to add the workshop. And please, please do appropriate outreach to get people involved because it's unacceptable that folks who have never experienced this get to decide how it's taken care of or avoided or compounded or made invisible. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Ms. Bravo, did you want to speak again?
I know I'll speak again about what I've seen in Oceanside a little hard, you know, with just like how much we spoke on that topic, so.
Okay, thank you very much. We're now on general council member comments. Anybody wishing to speak? You know, I, I do want to clarify, somebody accused me of not supporting the homeless shelter. I campaigned for-
I campaigned for years to get funding for the homeless shelter. I knew we had to do something drastic, because we did not have one. We contracted out for several years until we could not, and it got to be a problem when the churches, even the churches were not able to do the winter shelter. So I campaigned for funding through the county and through my congressman, and the funding came through. We did also have our own funding through Measure X, but we needed all that funding, and we needed to have a shelter. And I actually supported staff's recommendation, which was both for the operator and also for the model. It is unfortunate that we ended up with a different motion other than supporting the staff's recommendation, but we went forward, and certainly I went forward, with ensuring that we had the money that was in place to continue to make sure it got through. I continued to support a shelter in Oceanside, we need it, and we can do better. We actually have in the, at the Green, at the Greenbrier Village, we got to meet some of the residents there. That included, that's 59 units of affordable housing, that included homeless and, or residents or people who were in danger of becoming homeless. I ran into a woman who I saw on the streets. I knew that she had a home in the east side, and she ended up out on the streets, because, well, her family signed a reverse mortgage, and they didn't even know about it till it was, ended up being sold away from them. So for her to actually speak at the event and talk about her now forever home, we ended homeless for her, and she now has her forever home. So we are ending homeless, one person at a time, and I think that every single one is a victory. And that's what we need to do. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn this meeting to October 23, 2024, 3:30 p.m. Thank you.